Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We want to welcome everyone to today's meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council and ask the city clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Terry?
Here.
Councilmember Gatewood?
Yep.
Councilmember Pulipati?
Here.
Vice Mayor Sander?
Here.
Mayor Budge?
Here, thank you. Stacy, would you read all of the television announcements and the Zoom announcements?
The meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse cable systems. The meeting is closed captioned and will be webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will replay on Thursday, August 10th at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, August 12th at 9:00 a.m. This meeting can also be viewed at youtube.com/metrocable14. This meeting can also be picked up from the city clerk's office on a DVD, and it will be available on the city's website within 48 hours of adjournment of this meeting.
Thank you, Stacy. Tonight, we're going to begin our meeting, as we always do, with the Pledge of Allegiance and with an invocation, and we invite you to remain standing for both. Tonight's invocation will be presented by Dr. Dan DeJonge from River City Christian Church, and we have asked ours Deputy Fire Marshal Amy Nygren to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, please, Dan. Salute.
Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Amy.
Please bow your heads, please. Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight and ask for your blessings on this meeting. We know from Scripture that you created government as well as marriage, family, commerce, and the church. We ask tonight that each of our city leaders and staff that are called into service would be worthy of this call to glorify you and to serve others. Lord, guard our hearts, our thoughts, and our speech so that you may be honored and praised and others blessed because of our action. Amen.
Thank you, Dr. Dan. Please be seated. We have two really special presentations tonight, and I'm going to ask Amy Nygren, our Deputy Fire Marshal, and Garrett Gatewood, our colleague, to help us with these presentations. The first one is to Jason Sleeter. Jason.
Jason, come on up. This is a certificate of recognition. The city of Rancho Cordova hereby honors Jason Sleeter in recognition of a life-saving act on May 14th, 2023, in recognition of a successful effort in helping save a life in an emergency situation. At immense personal risk, you showed exceptional courage and determination in coming to the aid of a fellow human being. Presented this day, August 7th, 2023.
And as city councilman, I'm happy to offer you the key to the city. That's good for this door and the snack machine. Whatever you want of those two items are now open to you. So congratulations, and thank you for being such a great citizen of our city. Awesome. All right. Thank you so much.
Jason. Thank you. Is there anything you'd like to say?
Yeah, I think first and foremost, I just have a few thank yous to say. I'm not an incredibly eloquent speaker, so I just want to first say, you know, thank you to God for putting me in that place at that moment. There were a lot of things that day that could have kept me from being there. The individual who saved their life, she was a three-year-old little girl. And so my second thank you goes out to her father, who had no reason to trust me, a complete stranger. At the time of the resuscitation, I had a curly, long mustache and looked most akin to a villain as anybody possibly could. And so, again, he had no reason to trust me. And thirdly, I'd like to say thank you to my grandfather, who raised me to be extremely respectful of first responders, police officers, nurses, and doctors. Every night, we would listen to his scanner, and he raised me with all the tools that I needed to perform CPR. He even gave me, you know, little things that would go over victim's mask, which I never had to use. And then when I performed the CPR out in the field, of course, I didn't have one, so great. And then lastly, I want to say thank you to my family, who have supported me throughout my career in emergency medicine and intensive care. You know, I've seen many cases similar to this in which the outcome was not as good as this one, and so I just want to thank them for always being there for me and supporting me in my times of need.
Thank you, Jason.
Jason, Jason, you can thank your neighbors, too.
Siri lives across the street. Thanks, Siri.
So our second award tonight goes to a gentleman whose real name is Bob Rowe, but his given name is Warrants. And it is a family name, so Bob, if you would come forward. Bob's a longtime resident community participant.
Bob, this is a certificate of recognition as well. The city of Rancho Cordova hereby honors Bob Rowe in recognition of a life-saving act on March 8th, 2023, in recognition of a successful effort in helping save a life in an emergency situation. At immense personal risk, you showed exceptional courage and determination in coming to the aid of a fellow human being. Presented this day, August 7th, 2023.
Is that the snack bar one?
This is the snack bar one, and we've told you this. So here's your key to the city. You've been an amazing friend of mine and just a blessing. If you guys don't know this, Bob actually pulled over and pulled someone out of their car that had been stopped and hit by the train. And so he basically risked his life by pulling this front from the car before the fire, and everyone showed up. So an amazing individual, an amazing contribution to our city, an amazing Christian. Thank you for everything you do. Love you, man. I say something of appreciation. Everyone's watching you on TV.
I'm really not sure how I can follow Jason, except I think I just did what everybody, anybody here would do. You saw an opportunity to help somebody and really didn't even think about the risk. We just, I just pulled him out of his truck and did the best that I could. I'd like to thank my family, my wife, Annie, for giving me that courage to do that. Thank you. I'd like to thank my friend Garrett, because I wouldn't be up here if you'd have done what I asked you not to do.
That's true.
That's true. So, and Jason, we got the key to the snack bar. You hungry? Thank you, everybody.
So if the snack bar is empty, we'll know. Thank you both. It's not often that we get to do this kind of thing, and we really appreciate that. So we're going to have two really special presentations tonight that everybody wants to hear, but we also want to let you know that we have a public hearing item 11.2 requesting public input regarding the composition of potential council election districts as the city is working to transition from at-large to district-based. And so we will have discussion with and possible direction to staff and consultants regarding the number of districts, including whether or not to transition from an appointed mayor to a directly elected mayor. And we are going to do this at 6:30 or as soon thereafter as is practicable. So for all of you who came for the district item, districting item tonight, we will try to get to that at 6:30. But in the meantime, we are going to hear from a very special project that the Cordova Recreation and Park District has going on, their optimized plan presentation. So I think I'm going to call on Laura.
Good evening, Mayor Budge and city council members.
Welcome, Laura.
Thank you. My name is Laura Taylor. I am the Park Planning and Development Manager for Cordova Recreation and Park District. Thank you for the opportunity to give you an update on our CRPD Parks, Facilities, Recreation Optimized Plan. It is my pleasure to introduce you to Gates &amp; Associates, the planning firm that CRPD has contracted with to produce our optimized plan. Making the presentation tonight is Casey Case in our office, in the audience, and she is the Principal of Gates &amp; Associates. We also have a few members from CRPD in the audience as well. We have Vice Chair of our Board of Directors, Brian Danzel. We have our General Manager, Patrick Larkin. Our Director of Recreation and Parks, Jill Nuns, and the Clerk of our Board, Danielle Jones. And so with that, I will go ahead and turn it over to Casey to make the presentation for you.
Welcome, Casey.
Thank you. I brought my eight-year-old daughter this evening, so I'm excited. She got to see a very cool little ceremony at the beginning, so happy to be here. I will also try to take you smoothly through this update of our plan. So the next slide will show you, am I, oh, I'm the clicker, aren't I? Oh, maybe? Ha ha. Okay. So this is what we hope to update you guys on today, what our project is, what we've done so far, and where we plan to go. So a little bit of a steps-to-date of what we've done. So Laura did a great job introducing our team. So as you know, I'm Casey Case. I'm also the President of Gates &amp; Associates. I have an awesome team behind me, supporting that effort, and we're loving working with the district. The purpose of our plan is to set forward a roadmap. So we want to have an actionable document when we're done that really helps inform the current and future needs and how we can provide equitable access to the parks and recreation facilities and programs throughout the district. So the purpose and how we're doing that is to make sure we're paying attention to what we have now, so what's working, what's not working? How do we bridge that gap between the two things? What might that funding look like? How are we being considerate of the environment? How are we making sure we're listening to the community? And then putting together something that's realistic and implementable in the future. So we broke it into these three rounds. We took round one as understanding everything that there is. Round two is visioning and how do we get there? And round three is putting together that plan, making sure it's, again, that implementable document, that roadmap for the step forward. And throughout that process, we've had a lot of interactions with awesome stakeholders and different groups, and chatted with a ton of the community. And so we started that in our round one. So this was understanding what's going on now. So some of that was going out to the sites, a lot of that was talking to people, paying attention to those existing conditions. And some of that was looking at, what are the people here? What does it look like? And what do we think it might look like in the future? So quick summary here, there's not any drastic changes that we're really feeling like we need to be wary of, but we have a slightly aging population and a minor shift in some of that distribution of racial and ethnic diversity. We have some comparable information of other local districts, including Consumnis, Southgate, and Eldorado Hills. And in the simple evaluation of total parkland per resident, the Cordova District is relatively low in this moment, but that's something we planned for in some of our studies. And so we also did an inventory assessment. So this picture up here is a little bit of a slide that shows the inventory that we provide. So we went out to every site, took a look at, how is it now? Is it being well-used? What are some of the recreation opportunities available at the site? And where might there be some space for future opportunity? And then in that effort, we also began to create categories for different parks so we can establish some baseline improvements or levels of service that we expect in every opportunity or every park space. We also did a ton of outreach events, so hopefully we got to see some people or someone you know. At some of them, we were at some Halloween events, some tree lighting events, we had some online events, in case anybody couldn't make it out to those. We had some boards and a lot of QR codes, and really tried to have conversations with people about, what are some things that you love and use all the time that you want to make sure sustain? And what are some other cool things that you might like us to consider for the future? And we had some really cool findings from that. So a lot of nature theme, which I'm not surprised. I love that people want to be out in nature, they want to be outside. So there's a lot of requests for trees, walking paths, open, flexible spaces, and some of the things they'd like to see more enhancements on is maybe the inclusion of restrooms, even more trees, making sure we're mindful of shade structures, because surprise, it gets kind of hot. I don't know if you guys have noticed. And really just paying attention to what are some of the extra recreation things we could do. So number one was some community recreation facilities. And I mentioned that we went out and did our assessments. We started creating these categories. So we wanted a threshold for what do we expect in each one of these spaces? So we broke it into neighborhood parks, community parks, as you can see, kind of the division here, community serving a greater threshold and having a higher minimum of expectations of what's within that space. And then we also termed a new category, which we called Community Recreation Facilities. So we kind of felt like these things didn't quite fit in those buckets and had some unique elements to it that we wanted to make sure was being captured and accounted for when we did a lot of these studies and recommendations. So we also compared some of those offerings to some of our local districts, and actually were very pleasantly surprised that Cordova fares really well, so we offer a lot of great programs. And it was fun to see which ones had really high popularity, one being aquatics. And we also took a look at how do some of the assets and amenities compare to those local districts? So you can see, it varies a little bit, but it will be really fun for us to come up with where we want to raise the bar and really add some more of those facilities where we want to meet that standard as well. So just exploring where we need to improve and finding those sites where that can happen. Now, we also took a look at some of the financial assessment and how the district compares to others, just to get an understanding of where we are in the scheme of things. So across the board, there were some things where it's a little below, other things where it's a little above, and a lot where we're right in line. So opportunities there is what we really saw coming out of some of these findings. And so from here on, we're going to have one more in-person outreach event that we're really looking forward to. It'll be on Friday at the Lincoln Village Community Pool. And if you didn't feel hot enough and the need to go to a pool already, we're also incentivizing you with hot dogs. So I highly recommend getting out there. We had one last weekend, the hot dogs were great, and it was just the right temperature since we started in the evening. And it's just an opportunity for people to come out, hear about our project, and put some stickers on boards telling us about what amenities they would love to see and how we could prioritize those in the future, so helping us with some of that ranking. So when we come forward with some of those recommendations in our plan, it's really aligned with what the community wants. We also have, if anyone ever wants more information, we update the crpd.com/optimizedplan with any time we're at an event or where you can hear more information. We also have links to some of the latest presentations that we've given. If anyone wasn't able to make it to something, we record them and make sure they're available so everyone understands what we're up to and how they can contribute. So next, we will be putting together this plan, coming forward with those recommendations for improvements for parks and ways that we continue to make the district really vital as we continue to grow. So with that, if anyone has any questions, I would love to answer them to the best of my ability.
So Casey, probably the first question is whether your slides are on the, in that optimized plan website?
I believe they are, yes.
That would be a good thing.
Mm-hmm, yes. And feel free, I mean, because we're all about people knowing about it and spreading the word far and wide, so if any of you have networks you want to send it to and give them a chance to show up to our last event, it would be great to hear people's insights and ideas. The more the merrier.
Siri? David?
I'm curious about the word, first of all, thank you for the presentation. That's very nice. I'm curious about the word optimized.
Optimize. I think it is a way to not put us in too much of a master plan or long-term vision or specific plan box. It's allowing us to say, we're going to look at all of these things that aren't just about quality and access and distribution, but all of it combined. And so it's really like, what's our ideal plan if we're considering funding and growth and opportunity sites and existing things? So it's more than just a linear path forward. It's really considering a holistic approach. So it's something that the district coined. I'll give them credit for that.
Okay, so yeah, that word then, the way you just described it, is sort of how I interpreted it.
Good.
A whole bunch of variables, right?
Yes, yes.
And I guess if I was going to use another word, maybe a more common word, maybe it would be like efficiency or something, something like that, like, how can we be more efficiently, effectively?
Thoughtfully, yes.
Yeah, provide what we can with the resources we have based on the demand we know, those, that sort of process. So I guess what's critical then is like the data you're using. Like where does that, where does that come from? It looks, what I saw here was, you can do an inventory of what you have, that's not too hard. But what's hard is trying to figure out what people actually want or what they're actually using, like how many person hours are doing tennis versus swimming versus walking the dog versus, you know, playground, like people hours or something. Is there any sort of data like that, other than just what the focus groups presented?
Well, so I don't think we necessarily have a study of how many people are using what, but we do have records of how many people engage in recreation classes or courses or programs. So we do have that, and we're taking a look at that, and we've compared it to some of the other districts, so we understand where we lie, especially on like enrollment. And then we are pretty dependent on the community telling us what they use and what they want. And we're fortunate, we've got a lot of feedback in our round one when we asked those questions, over a thousand respondents telling us what they'd like to see and where they want that emphasis to go in the future, which was, I abbreviated it a lot, but it was very nature-based. So it was walking paths, opportunities to be outside, shade, trees. So that's an emphasis we are going to carry into our recommendations.
Yes, you have to compare against something, and it's the something we're talking about here, right?
Yes, yeah.
So I would think there'd be things like, youth sports is probably the best example, where you've got, what is it, 1,200 Rancho Cordova soccer kids in that league? And they've got three months' worth of games, probably, so like 12 games probably in a season? And they've got two practices a week on top of that, so it's sort of like 1,000 times, whatever that's going to be.
Right.
You know, that's like 36,000 events or some, by person event things, right?
Right.
But it's even more because the parents come, coaches are there. So that would seem to be like, if you're measuring all these things, I don't know if you get 36,000 dogs a year at the dog park. I guess no. But that, like weighing that.
Dog counter.
Yeah, yeah. But like weighing that is of interest. Like I'm pretty sure you don't have 36, just using that number, 36,000 tennis players a year.
Right, right. Or active users.
Maybe pickleball now.
But that's the, that's the point right there.
Right.
Then, you know, how do we measure the lack of opportunity against something we're only getting with a survey?
Right. So what we are also doing is comparing to our benchmark communities. So we've looked at the Southgate and the Consumnis District, and so we can see, and also the NRPA standards, so that's like the National Recreation Standard. So we can see an expectation of X amount of soccer fields per resident, and we can see where Cordova lies versus our comparable districts. So we have that information, so we know if we're light or heavy. We also have the extra tool of obviously working with the district to do it. And so we get to ask, do we want to level up and be equal to our districts or the NRPA? Do we feel like we, as a community, maybe it didn't come back high from our surveys, and it's not something super important, so we don't think we need to double down? Or they know, because they've had to schedule 3,600 soccer games in a year, they're like, we need more, we need to be more than those comparable districts. So we get to do a level of effort where we know our district and where we're hitting bottlenecks or where we're not. And then Gates brings our expertise and the understanding of recreation and some of the trends about where we're like, we're like pickleball. It may not have hit you yet, but it's huge, and everybody loves it. And we know, you know, cricket might not be the most popular thing in this moment, but it is, and we might want to consider, and it doesn't have to be tomorrow, but we might want to consider that in our long-term plan, we're identifying potential spaces for this opportunity. So that, that's how we're capturing it.
Yeah. So the challenge is, if the survey doesn't show it, and you don't really have participation data, then the next question I get to is the efficiency one, return on the investment. So let's say we've got tennis courts that are beat up, how much pickleball could we do there?
Right.
Don't quite know how to do that math, like, is a dollar better spent on pickleball? Or is it better spent on more soccer? Because that's 36,000 people events.
Right.
Soccer, nothing else is close to that, right? How do you like weigh those two?
Well, I think, I don't know that there's always going to be a tit-for-tat able to weigh them, but we can study, like, the cost of removing a tennis court versus the need for soccer and have a cost comparison. Or it's like, is removing that tennis court and making it soccer going to be more costly than identifying somewhere else a soccer field could go? So we do have that ability, which is why it helps that we have our team that can study costs and we can study design opportunity, right? Because we know the size. But I also think that we are, we are leaning on the community survey to tell us, like, is soccer something really important that everybody told us they want to see? And if it's not, then it may not be something that we want to compromise tennis for.
Right.
Right? So there's a lot of factors that weigh in on it, and we have this nice complicated, hopefully you never have to see it or work in it, but it's a complicated Excel document that has like these criteria that we use to weigh how we prioritize different improvements, and what it ultimately spits out is the plan that we share. So you guys don't have to be quite so in the weeds, but we explain what led to those
Okay. Did you also mention there's some sort of like industry standard or industry guideline?
There is, yes, yes.
Like a California version of that?
It's a national one. So there's not a California-specific one, but we, there's a national one that we can compare also to our benchmark communities as well.
All right. Did you do any special outreach to Cordova High or any of the middle schools or other schools?
We did reach out to sports groups and had some conversations with them, so not specifically with the school, but affiliated sports groups we did.
So I know there's odd situations. Well, Brian's here, former tennis coach, where you've got the high school courts and the Cordova District courts, and the maintenance level is wildly different between the two, but I think the tennis team uses all of them. So there's, they've approached us and said, what can you do about this tennis problem?
Yeah, so one of the things we will look at in our recommendations is joint-use opportunities. So that's a perfect example. So that's like a collaboration with schools, where it can be joint use of a shared facility. We'll also take a look at public-private partnerships. So sometimes, you know, in other areas, we've looked at, like private clubs, where they're not using all their facilities, and maybe there can be an exchange and shared use of resources. So that is something we'll explore.
Okay, very good. Is this coming back to us in some form? Or the final version of it?
I know that we will make the draft version available for review. I don't know that I'll be back for a presentation.
All right. Thank you. Those are my questions.
So I just had a couple of questions, kind of along the same lines as David's questions. You said you'd reached out to other athletic groups that are a favorite affiliated with the park district already, but I'm wondering if sort of umbrella groups like the Rancho Cordova Athletic Association was contacted.
I don't, off the top of my head, remember all the groups. I apologize. But we do have a record of all the groups and stakeholders that we talked to, so I can, I can follow back up on that for sure.
So then how, how would you evaluate, how would you evaluate some sports that are not offered in general in Rancho Cordova? And I'm thinking about things like disc golf, which is wildly popular, not only in this region, but all over the world. And we don't read about tennis clubs or tennis courts being converted to soccer fields. We read about tennis courts being converted to pickleball fields. And it probably isn't just senior communities, it's probably just park districts in general.
Right.
And then we have one skate park for skates and BMX, but the fact that we could probably use more, and the fact that every time you start off to evaluate a new park, everybody says, "Dog park." So how did you, how did you go about factoring in uses that are not necessarily So how did you, how did you go about factoring in uses that are not necessarily provided in the district right now?
That's a great question. So disc golf is a perfect example. So we took a look at, as I mentioned, the NRPA standard as well as the comparable district. So we can see if there's something they have that we don't. We also did ask questions about some of the recreation trends we've seen elsewhere. And so disc golf was one that we asked people, like, you don't currently have this, is this a program you would like in the future? So we are pulsing the community on things that are on our radar as well as kind of an other box. So we let people tell us if there was an other, something that we might not know about. And the opportunity for flexible spaces, because that's a trend we've seen in recreation is that people want a space that can be used for a lot of different events and it's, it's transferable for different uses, right? So big gatherings or sports events, whatever it may be. Uh, we will be looking at pickleball, that's always a thing, and studying if the need for tennis is being outweighed by a need for pickleball and how we could serve both. There's always, there's always strong opinions about that, but we are coming up, again, it's a long-term plan. So it's not necessarily things that we would be proposing to happen tomorrow on everybody's tennis courts, but maybe when we're taking a look at where our demographic is heading. And you're right, it's not just elderly who play pickleball. It can be something we can propose, short-term solutions look like this, long-term solutions might look like that. And again, we have that final opportunity to refine specific to the district by being like, okay, do we want to be more than our neighbors because we know this is popular here and it's something we're already hearing about? So we can choose to go above and beyond what that standard might be.
Well, and, and people like disc golf, um, um, players go all over the place.
Sure, yeah.
I mean, I, I can, I can list off twelve different places where you can go to disc golf and it's not me.
Right.
But I know other people who do and have been trying to do that here for a long time.
Yeah.
The other question, you know, is it's, it's always a, a concern. How do you, um, how do you evaluate? Kind of the lost opportunity? So if you build, like if you, a far out example, if you built a bocce ball court everywhere or a paton court everywhere, who would come? Would there anybody be coming?
Right.
You know, it used to be, um, it used to be everybody thought having a horseshoe court was a great idea. And then, oh, by the way, um, we don't do horseshoe courts anymore.
Yeah.
So.
Well, I think, um, we try to evaluate it again holistically optimized, right? So we're not studying just one thing and solving one recreation opportunity. So if we're saying we need five more pickleball courts and in putting those pickleball courts, we lose two bocce balls. If somewhere else we've identified it, we need four more bocce ball courts, then that's not a switch we're going to make, right? Because we're looking at everything we're trying to accomplish. And that's why some of it are going to be, short-term, we're going to do this because we need ten pickleball courts and we're going to put four in here. And we're not going to get those other six for another five years, but that's the long term, right? So we're, we're not doing anything in a vacuum with just one amenity. We're thinking about all of them. And we also get a chance to look at sites specifically, where will they fit and make sense? So we're also looking at the distribution of the parks and recreation amenities throughout the district. And we're taking a look at, if you have fifteen bocce ball courts over here and we need five more, let's not put the other five right here. Let's put them over here, right? Because we're trying to also get access to as many recreation opportunities to as many people as possible. So we're geographically thinking about where we're locating them. And not to make it sound super complicated, we can do it, I swear. But we're also looking at where does it actually make sense? Like, because sometimes you don't want to put a skate park next to bocce ball for seniors, right? So it's like, we want to think about uses and the suitability of the site as well. So there's a lot of little factors, but it does all kind of play out. And then we recommend this is what needs to happen first and then these, and then long-term, maybe these ones that are a little longer range vision.
So my takeaway from today is, um, all the disc golf guys need to get mobilized. Okay, anything else?
I do, I just realized there was one other comparison that wasn't, wasn't really there. You compared with other, uh, independent park districts.
Right.
What about a comparison with like the city of Folsom, city of Roseville or city of Sacramento?
We tried to do district to district so that it was similar resources and assets. Because sometimes the comparable, if you're going from bigger to smaller or vice versa, can, can skew things a little bit. So we wanted to try to keep it apples to apples. That was our effort.
It just seems like, you know, people probably recreate similar in Folsom to how they do here. They're just a different style of provider. If you're interested, see what is that marketplace like compared to ours as opposed to just looking at similar parts, you know, similar providers? It's like, how would a different provider potentially alter what we do?
Hopefully not significantly. But I, I think, again, that extra effort where the district folks have the opportunity to bring in their awareness of, of what's happening around or where we might have, um, partnerships or competition even. Like is somebody going there to do that because we're not providing it here? And so now we need to provide it because we want to offer that service. So we're, we're paying attention to what's happening around us, but not in a formal benchmarking study.
Because actually, if you look at the, um, the actual size of the city of Folsom compared to the size of the Cordova Recreation and Park District, CRPD is probably twice the size of the city of Folsom, minimum. It has been, it has been the largest, um, park district in Sacramento County. Not necessarily the largest population at points, but the largest acreage.
It's sort of like if your Target and their Walmart, you, you're doing similar things differently.
Right.
You can compare yourself to the other Targets or you can say, what is Walmart actually doing? How do we compare to that?
Yeah.
That would seem to be more informative than just adding another target to the list.
Okay, anybody else? Well, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you Patrick and Brian and your team. Thank you, Laura. So I think we're going to welcome our police chief and his team. To talk about, um, is it Brian?
It's Russ.
Oh, Russ.
Online.
Russ online?
Yeah.
Oh. Backed up by Brian in the room. Brandon in the room.
Russ, are you online?
I am, sorry about that.
That's okay. It's our understanding that you're going to kick off this presentation and then maybe punt to some others.
Yes, that's correct. Well, good evening, Mayor Budge and council members, Russ Dusharm, Neighborhood Services Manager. Here to give you a brief update on the twentieth anniversary and Fourth of July activities that, uh, happened here throughout the city. Next slide, please. So our meeting goals tonight are to review the illegal fireworks enforcement and discuss the twentieth anniversary celebration as well as the Fourth of July celebration and cap it off with a twentieth anniversary and Fourth of July, uh, media coverage. Next slide, please. So from the enforcement side, um, of the house here on July third and fourth, we had, um, five enforcement teams, field enforcement teams out in the city. They were two-person teams comprised of one crime suppression unit, uh, police officer and one code enforcement officer, just responding to illegal firework calls. This year, we kind of broadened our enforcement, uh, by adding two drone teams, two, two-person drone teams that were deployed throughout the city, uh, based off of last year's heat map, um, which we'll go over here in another slide. The total calls for service this year, um, July first through the eighth, uh, a bit of a spike from last year. We had five hundred and fifty total calls for service that were received by the Sheriff's Communication, um, Center. Last year only two hundred and fifty-one, so just about double. Of that five hundred and fifty calls for service, the team responded to a hundred and twenty. There were duplicates in that five fifty, but the team responded to a hundred and twenty and issued sixty-five administrative citations. Conversely, in twenty twenty-two, there are two hundred and fifty-one calls for service, a hundred and thirty were responded to by the team and twenty-six administrative citations issued, uh, last year. And just to have first perspective, um, once we get that list of, uh, properties identified as, um, having illegal firework activity through the calls for service, um, and we, we didn't respond to that property, um, with the enforcement teams, we will send out a letter to the property owner, um, a courtesy letter educating them on the, the host ordinance as it relates to, um, illegal fireworks. So next slide, please. So before you are the heat maps, uh, from twenty twenty-two and then twenty twenty-three. Not a huge difference in, in kind of location as, um, where these fireworks would be in, um, set off. Definitely, uh, drastic, uh, change in concentration, you know, um, which is accredited to the increased calls for service, um, in twenty twenty-three. So with that, I'm going to hand it off to, uh, Deputy Fire Marshal Amy Nigren, um, and she's going to provide some information.
Welcome back, Amy.
Thank you, Mayor Budge, council members, Amy Nigren, Metro Fire. Um, a little bit about our activities throughout the Fourth of July timeframe. This is that July first to the July fourth time. Our PIO and our Community Relations Division worked closely with Maria and her team, to get out early messaging and safety and education to the public. Um, all of the Metro Fire Engines located within the city of Rancho Cordova had special decals placed on them with the safety messaging of keep it safe and keep it legal. Um, and then we had our apparatus involved in, uh, the parades, um, as well as apparatus and cert members and fire inspectors at your Fourth of July activities at Hagan Park and for the twentieth anniversary. Again, during that July first to the fourth timeframe, we had all of our investigators on duty as well as our inspectors with a concentration on the third and the fourth. Our investigators were following up on all of the fires within the district, not just, uh, Rancho Cordova. Um, and then a lot of our inspectors were either assigned to fireworks displays or the enforcement side of it and following up on complaints, including one seizure of fireworks of over two thousand pounds at one location in Fair Oaks. Um, within the city of Rancho Cordova itself, we had twenty-three complaints. Although that seems like a small number for us, Russ and his team were fantastic at, at fielding those calls and taking those, um, enforcement activities. So calls for service specific, specific to fire within the city of Rancho Cordova, we were dispatched to a hundred and sixty calls. Within those hundred and sixty calls, there were thirty-one fire calls, a hundred and twenty-one medical calls, and then eight that would be classified as other. So it could be, um, a law enforcement assist, an animal rescue, a lockout, um, and as such. Of all the fire calls that were received, seven of them were due to illegal fireworks or due to fireworks, excuse me. Actually, zero were specific to illegal fireworks. Uh, one was determined to be safe and sane fireworks use, and the other six were unable to be determined based on the extent of the fire, the debris that was left over. We cannot make a determination as to what type of firework was there, so we have to classify it as an undetermined firework. With that, that is the activities for Metro Fire, if there's any questions. Otherwise I can turn it over, I believe Maria is taking over.
I, I have a question.
Sure.
Of the sixty-five administrative citations, and this could be for Russ or for you, how many of them led to people actually paying the citation fee?
That would be a question Russ, for Russ.
Yeah, so, so they have thirty days to pay the, pay the fine, um, but they also have the right to appeal. So we're still working through that process. Some people have come in and paid, a small percentage have come in and paid. We do have quite a few appeals that are, um, that we are going to be processing here in the next month or so with Adam's team. But I can get that finite number to you, uh, probably in another month, um, once they're all adjudicated through the hearing process.
Thank you, Russ. I'd be really interested to see how their appeal works out. I mean, if they had fireworks on their property and then what sort of appeal gets them out of it?
Sure.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Amy. Welcome, Maria.
Thank you, good evening, Honorable Mayor and, uh, council members. Maria Chacon-Niestad with the Communications and Public Affairs Department. Transitioning from, uh, firework safety and enforcement, we wanted to talk a little bit about, um, our celebratory elements related to our twentieth anniversary and Fourth of July. Next slide, please. So we talked at the last council meeting, you all talked a little bit about, uh, the events that you attended, but we thought for the benefit of the community at large, we would go through and do a quick summary of some of the special elements that, um, the council approved and the community council created and the city team supported. So as you can see here on the slide, and, and by the way, anyone who wasn't able to make it to any of these events can go to cityofranchocordova.org/20thanniversary. And there are photo galleries of all of these events if you, um, would like to take a look at those. So, uh, first off, we started, we kicked it off on, uh, June fifteenth with the MAC exhibit. And, uh, that was really, um, a wonderful opportunity to take, to take a literal walk along, uh, memory lane through twenty years of history of the city. And then, uh, on June thirtieth, uh, our Symphony Dioro and our River City Concert Band played to a packed house at, uh, the Cordova Performing Arts, um, Center. And, uh, they had a very, very special program, um, that they developed for the city and it was a beautiful evening. It was extremely hot the next day on July first in Village Green Park. And for those who braved the hundred and five degree heat, uh, you were able to see David Garibaldi live. He created three paintings, um, for us that evening, all very specific to Rancho Cordova. And we'll see those, um, hanging here in City Hall, uh, very soon, as soon as those are framed. Next slide, please. That was followed by Civics Day on Monday, which was a celebratory council meeting. And as you can see from the photos here, many people from the community, uh, came to celebrate, uh, the city and, um, congratulate them on twenty years of, uh, success and progress. From there, uh, there was a, a train that took people to Hagan Park and, uh, where we celebrated the anniversary drone and firework show, which was pretty spectacular. As you can see here, um, the drones, uh, were able to spell out, um, some messages to us in addition to, uh, a really beautiful firework show. And then, uh, the city team was able to support the community council's, um, event efforts with a number of, um, uh, elements. And you can see the Twenty Years, a Million Dreams, um, book, which I actually have a copy, uh, here and some in the back for those who, uh, don't have copies, but you can also get that on the website in a digital format. We also have a display upstairs that, um, will take you through city's history. I mentioned the website already, and then we also have a wonderful video that we, um, brought to life. So, um, I, next slide, please. On, uh, Fourth of July, we had the All-America Mile Run, um, our wonderful Fourth of July parade. And then, of course, wrapped it up with, um, a spectacular Rancho Cordova Fourth of July, uh, with the carnival, more fireworks, integrated drone show and, um, the hot air balloon, I believe, made it up in the air. I'm not sure anyone actually was in it, uh, for safety reasons, but it did make it, um, up in the sky. Next slide.
Do you have a photo of that?
Uh, yes, we do. We do have a photo of them up in the air. And then, uh, Persephone is going to play a, a short, um, video of some of the coverage that we received. And then I, I'm going to report out on some of the, um, results from that coverage.
I only ask because one time it was laying, one day it was laying on the ground and the next day it was all geese.
We did capture that photo in the air.
And here in Rancho Cordova, you can expect something special this year, a drone show to be paired with the fireworks.
As thousands of Northern Californians celebrate America's birthday, also mark-
As thousands of Northern Californians celebrate America's birthday, also marking a birthday of another kind.
It's Rancho's twentieth birthday, so we're coming out to celebrate the Fourth of July in Rancho Cordova.
Twenty years since Rancho Cordova became a California city, something longtime resident Peggy remembers well.
I was here when it happened, and now we're here to celebrate.
Celebrating its twentieth anniversary with its annual two-day Fourth of July festival. This morning, Gary's on the go at Hagan Community Park with a look at one activity that will take you high in the sky. Gary, this looks cool. You guys feeling it up? I'm in a balloon! This is amazing! All right, yeah, seriously, Richard, so cool. We're not in the air right now. It's a little bit too windy. Tim's going to tell us more about that, because, Tim, this is your balloon. This is cool, sky drifters. We're inside, but we're on the ground. It's a little bit windy right now, right?
Yeah, right now, the wind's up this morning. It's kind of a result of it cooling off yesterday or this morning. Now, it's going to be a much cooler day out here than the last couple, so a lot more pleasant.
... by mortars, AKA what is the beginning of a big fireworks show. To be very clear, the biggest fireworks show in Northern California. Now imagine that paired with a drone show. It is top-tier, top-notch. We're going to get to exactly how all this works in just a moment.
People are already here. They're expecting to see about twenty thousand people over the span of this two-day event. So you can see, they've got the carnival game, some people trying their luck, hoping to get some of those prizes, and everything else you might expect out here, right? We've got carnival food, and of course, the rides are going, we've got swings, the Ferris Wheel. They started, gates opened at about four.
One local city is celebrating the U.S. and its own twentieth birthday.
Let's check it out. CBS 30's Madison Keely is live at Rancho Cordova, where the celebration, as we can see, is underway. Madison.
This is the grand finale. I got to move out of the way so folks at home can take this in. Rancho Cordova's birthday, the United States of America's birthday, so to speak. This is the grand finale. This is what hundreds have come out tonight, braved the traffic, gotten their seats, and now the cheers. I mean, you can't time it any better than that. America's birthday gift, the fireworks show here, a lot of traffic, a lot of people, and a lot of excitement.
So those are just some of the clips that we had from our media efforts. We had seven online stories, fifty-five broadcast stories, three print stories, and sixty-five total stories. It's more media coverage than we've ever had in the past, for a total of over seventeen million views. And that's up twenty-two percent from last year, and if you take a look at that in terms of ad dollars, it's worth about two hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars in promotion and publicity. So, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Congratulations, team.
Congratulations to the city.
I will just sort of informally add, and I think Shelley's going to come here and do an official report, like from the court of a community council point of view, but as a board member, president of the board, I saw some numbers the other day at our board meeting, and we were record-setting in almost every measure.
Definitely a hundred, maybe a hundred or two that were there, so.
I mean, paid admission, twenty-seven thousand people.
Was that minus the hundreds that were there, or was that before the hundreds?
The hundreds, yeah. It was, we parked more cars than ever, sold more stuff than ever, had more admissions than ever, had more people in the parade than ever. Yeah, it was, it was really good. The combination either with the cooling of the weather just right, or the extra show that we put on, or the twentieth anniversary, whatever it was.
It was the drones.
Huge, huge success.
The drones, I've gotten more compliments on seeing the crazy lip drones that were out there, you know, the lips and stuff like that? Lip drones. It was great, and good job on all the PR. We, you know, it's not, people don't realize how important it is to get the messaging out about Rancho Cordova and what a great city is, and if we don't tell our own story, then other people get to set the narrative, and it was, it was clear that we were pushing the twentieth and how amazing our city was. So good job on that. I felt it in other cities, and we were even shown internationally. So my family that's over in France saw pictures of Rancho and some of the stuff that was going on here.
Amazing. Thank you, Maria. Russ, is there, is that it, or do you have other?
That's it. That's it. Thank you so much for time and allowing us to present.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Have a good evening. So, given that tonight we have advertised our agenda in a little bit different order, and the fact that we have reached six-thirty, we are going to skip down to item eleven-point-two and ask Stacy to read the agenda title.
The agenda title for eleven-point-two is a public hearing requesting public input regarding the composition of potential council election districts as the city is working to transition from at-large to district-based elections for city council members, and a discussion with and possible direction to staff and consultants regarding the number of districts, including whether or not to transition from an appointed mayor to a directly-elected mayor. I also would like to let individuals know that for this item, we have translation services that are available, both in Russian and Spanish, and I'm going to invite those individuals to come forward and to speak into the microphone and introduce themselves. So if there is anyone in the council chambers who is not understanding me right now, and they would like to use these services, you can connect with them.
Welcome, ladies.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Good evening, council members, mayor. Thank you. My name is Maria, and I'm the Spanish interpreter, so I'm going to go ahead and introduce myself to the public. Thank you. Me llamo Maria, soy interprete de español. Si alguien necesita estos servicios que nos ha propuesto la ciudad de Rancho Cordova, estamos en la mesa del final. Por favor, acérquense y con gusto les prestaremos estos servicios. Gracias.
Mucho gusto. Good evening, everyone. I'm a Russian and Ukrainian interpreter, Tatiana Banderchuk. And may I speak to the audience? Здравствуйте, я Татьяна Бандерчук. Я перевожу на украинский и на русский язык. Если кому нужна помощь, мы сидим за этим столом. Пожалуйста, подойдите к нам.
Очень приятно.
Thank you.
Me toje. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other languages, mayor?
Do you want to take it?
I can kick it off, and I can turn it over to Adam, if he'd like to say a few words, our city attorney, and then we can turn it over to our consultant. So I can share that on July seventeenth of this year, two thousand and twenty-three, that the council adopted a resolution of intent to work towards transitioning from at-large to district-based elections. And we have a presentation tonight from our consultant, and Doug Yocum will be presenting on some information for all of us as we begin to talk about this process and include your input. So this is one of five public hearings. We also have two community forums that are coming up on the calendar over the course of the next several weeks, and I'm going to now turn it over to our city attorney, Adam Lindgren.
Stacy, why don't you go ahead and announce the dates of those two forums?
The dates of the two forums are August tenth, two thousand and twenty-three, here at Rancho Cordova City Hall, and August thirtieth, also here at Rancho Cordova City Hall.
And didn't every resident get a postcard for all of those?
Not yet.
I got one.
I know, they were mailed, but they haven't all arrived yet.
But we mailed everybody in the city one, too, right?
I would have to ask Maria, with regards to the postcards, did every residence in Rancho Cordova receive a postcard? Or it's coming in the mail?
Right.
Correct.
They should have been delivered on Saturday. And if not, sounds like some of you might have received one today, or it might still be coming.
It depends on the U.S. mail mail.
Thank you, Mayor.
Welcome, Adam.
I might just add a few comments. The city is very pleased to have retained the services of National Demographics Corporation. They're a nonpartisan firm that does this work statewide and really throughout the western United States. They are a nonpartisan firm. They focus on the legal requirements and the numbers and the history, and we have worked with them, the city clerk, the city manager and I, with the direction of the council, to do a process that we are confident is intentionally going well above and beyond the legal requirements for the number of ways that we reach out to the public and engage the public in this process. You'll hear them talk about the numerous different ways that the public will be involved in this, and the very extensive efforts to engage the public in the process through the mapping efforts and the additional public workshops that we'll be conducting. We are very pleased and hope that this will result in a process where the public has, feels very engaged, and we are on a relatively short timeframe because the law requires us to be. So you'll hear talk through this process about, you know, certain legal structures, and there are a lot of things that we are very carefully complying with, and also, again, trying to do much more than the law requires in terms of the community's efforts and activities. So with that, we're very pleased to have Doug come on up and give this evening's presentation, and there will be, again, approximately half a dozen other opportunities for the public to learn more about and engage in this process.
Okay, welcome, Doug.
Good evening, council, mayor and council. A pleasure to be here. My name is Doug Yocum. I assume this is the clicker right here? Okay. I'm Doug Yocum with National Demographics Corporation. We have been brought on, as Adam said, to help you through this process, and I'll get right into it right here.
Let's just ask the question, as I did with the park district. This is the presentation that's on the city website, under PowerPoint.
This presentation was shared in the agenda packet that was released to the public. It is on our website, yes.
Great, thank you.
And on that point, there will, there is a specific website, as required by the law, for the city on your website. So you go to, I think it's on the bottom right, and you click on districting, and you'll be able to go to the specific website for this topic.
Super, thank you.
For the benefit of the public, we'll say it lots of times, that's cityofranchocordova.org/districts.
So what we're engaged in is, as has been mentioned, we're moving from at-large elections, which has been traditional here in Rancho Cordova and other cities for the last twenty years, to by-district elections. There is, there are alternatives to this process. One is a process called from district, or residence districts. Elk Grove was this way for many years. You had to live in a district to run for council, but the entire city still voted on each council election. You have decided to go to a by-district system, and we will engage in that process starting today. And the California Voting Rights Act is written specifically to encourage by-district elections. What we are not covering in this topic today are things like term limits, or how much a council member makes for being on the council, whether the council is full or part-time, or whether that, the city has a strong mayor, or some form of government, or a city manager form of government. Those are separate topics. All we're talking about is how we're going to draw districts that in your next election of two thousand and twenty-four will elect a certain number of members to the council, and then twenty-six, another certain number of members to the council. All we're doing is talking about districts and how those lines will be drawn. And we are governed by the California Voting Rights Act, which was enacted several years ago by the legislature. It's different from the Federal Voting Rights Act, which has to do with minority or protected class voters within an area. That's a separate law, but the California Voting Rights Act makes it easier for plaintiffs to force jurisdictions such as Rancho Cordova, or school districts, or special districts to elect members by district. And it's the Jingles test, the Jingles case was a famous redistricting case that talked about the Federal Voting Rights Act, and the California Voting Rights Act has a lower standard for how districts should, how cities or counties or special districts should elect members by district. And those are mentioned here. If anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to talk about it. The impact of the Voting Rights Act, California Voting Rights Act, has been very significant. Two hundred and seventy-five, probably close to three hundred, school districts by now have been forced to go into, elect by districts. Community college districts, which basically, that covers the whole state. Every community college district is pretty much now by district. One hundred and ninety-one cities, this is another one, so this will add to that total. One county board of supervisors had to go. Believe it or not, the San Mateo County supervisors had been elected at-large for very, forever, and they were forced to go to districts just in the last cycle. And fifty-three other water and special districts. When a city chooses to challenge the request to go to special, go to districts, they always lose. So it's always a good idea for a city to adopt the idea and not have to go through the complicated process of fighting it in court and having to end up paying the plaintiffs for their trouble. Palmdale spent about one point eight million to fight the idea unsuccessfully. Santa Monica is still paying because that case has not been decided by the California Supreme Court, and the plaintiffs in that case requested twenty-two million dollars. So it's just not a place you want to be. Here is the process that we have recommended, and your staff has adopted for this endeavor. Today's hearing is August seventh, that's the first hearing, where hopefully we will receive ideas from the public. I will be conducting a community forum here August tenth, where I'll go into detail about how residents can become involved in the process. Your second hearing will be one week from today. It's a special hearing date of August fourteenth. And then we have a deadline for people to, for residents to submit ideas, districts, district plan, districting plans to your website that we will then post publicly, so we can discuss them at the following meeting, which is the first hearing to talk about actual districts, August twenty-ninth. Then we'll have another community forum the day after that, August thirtieth, another map submission deadline, so the public can either revise some of the things they've done or submit new ideas, and post those maps, and have a hearing September eighteenth, where we will hopefully decide on one of these maps and introduce an ordinance, and then the final hearing will be October second, where you adopt that ordinance. Is there any water? Here are the rules under which all cities, counties are required to do the districting. We are required to follow federal law, thank you, which requires the districts be equal in population. The California Voting Rights Act uses the word substantially equal, which means basically equal. If you draw four districts, or five districts, or seven, or however many, those districts generally have to be the same in population for each district. We have to follow the Federal Voting Rights Act, which means that we cannot, that we must, if there are protected classes of voters within your community, we must protect those neighborhoods, and we cannot divide them. But however, we cannot go into the process with the intent to... But however, we cannot go into the process with the intent to draw districts by, by race. That's, that's not allowed under the, under the Federal Voting Rights Act and various Supreme Court decisions since that time. The California Voting Rights Act requires us to follow some very specific guidelines. The districts have to be contiguous. They have to be one, there has to be a connection within, within each district. You can't have one part of a district over here and one part of a district somewhere else. It requires the city to go through a process of finding whether there are communities of interest among its residents, and to respect those communities of interest if, if they are pointed out to the council. Those are, and we'll talk about a little later, socioeconomic issues by geographic area, and we, we will attempt to keep those communities, if they are found, to be together. You also are required to, to follow easily identifiable boundaries, major streets, roads, rivers, creeks, so that citizens, when they, when they look at a map, they can understand what district they are in, and rather than having squiggly lines going through neighborhoods so you can't figure out which district you actually live in. So it's, we're required, to the extent possible, to draw, use easily identifiable boundaries, such as the major streets or other geographic boundaries that are, that are known, well-known. The districts are required to be compact, and by that, the act means that you cannot bypass one group of people to get to another group of people that are, that are more distant or further away. That's the definition in the Voting Ri, in the California Voting Rights Act. So basically, you try to just keep this, the district as compact as you can. There's only one prohibition in the California Voting Rights Act, and I've never run into it in, in any city or, or district I've worked with. We cannot favor or discriminate against a political party when we're drawing districts. That's the only specific prohibition in the, in the California Voting Rights Act. On the right-hand side here, I have traditional redistricting principles. These are things that are not required by the California Voting Rights Act, and they are not prohibited by the Voting Rights Act. Therefore, if you choose to use them, at your discretion, you may. And that is, we call it respecting voters' choices or continuity in office. That is not purposely going in and trying to take away the opportunity for a sitting member of a, of a council to run for, to run in a district. That you, you can use that to standard if you so choose. You can also plan for future population growth, whereas you, if you know there's going to be growth within an area and you're drawing a district in that area, you can under-populate that district. But you have to be very careful, because what you, what you're doing, what, what has to happen then is another district has to be overpopulated. And you have to stay within the standard of a total deviation of approximately 10% so that your districts are not out of balance as far as representation, population representation is concerned. Here is a profile of the city of, a demographic profile of the city of Rancho Cordova. You can see by total population, by citizen, voting, voting age, population, what the, what the percentages are. Those are the, generally, the, the numbers that we have to keep an eye on. And on the left-hand side, we've noted if, depending on how many districts you choose to draw, what the ideal population in each one of those districts will be. If you draw four districts, approximately 20,000 persons per district, because your total population is 64,800. Five, it'll be about 16,000 people, and then, and so on, whatever you, whatever you decide to, however many you decide to draw. We have some demographic maps here, showing where populations of protected class voters You look for the red or the, or the light blue to, to notice the larger concentrations. We have Asian Americans concentrated around the Stone Creek area, Tuscany Park, and Anatolia. And there are Latinos, the Latinos and African Americans are not geographically concentrated anywhere in, in a significant way in, in, in the city of Rancho Cordova. If you look at the bottom map, there's not a, that's the African American concentration. There, there's not a significant concentration anywhere. So what we would like to hear from the, from the residents, residents of your community, is what, what, tell us what, about your neighborhood. Tell us what your neighborhood is like, whether it's something that needs to be respected during this process. It would be helpful if you give us the, the, the boundaries of your, of your neighborhood, where, whether there's a highway or a major, major street around it. Is it concentrated around a park or a school? Is that the community of interest that you'd, you'd like respected during this process? Or is there some other neighborhood issue that, that you feel needs to be discussed, respected, as far as the, as your neighborhood within the city of Rancho Cordova, and whether or not that neighborhood should or should not be divided? These are just some, some ways that people can, can define their community. They could do it by geographic area, or a shared issue, law enforcement, street noise abatement, or something like that. We had, in other words, a, a resident can come and say, this issue is important to us here, and it's important to the people in the neighborhood bounded by this, these lines. And then we'll, we'll look and see and, and try to make sure that that community is respected to the extent possible as we go through the process. Would this been, would this community benefit from being included within a single district? Or for, for purposes of it, of its effective representation? Or would it benefit more from having multiple representatives? The classic idea here is, if you think of Lincoln, Lincoln Hills, a large, large, large senior community, they may want to be part of two different districts, so they have, shall we say, influence over two members of, of the council rather than just one, where they made, where they united. Some communities are so large that that is a consideration. I don't know if there are any of like, like that here. There's one thing that communities of interest does not include, and that is relationships with political parties, incumbents, or candidates. That's not a community of interest. Up on your website, very soon, will be what we call mapping tools. We will have the interactive map that, for each, for each map that is submitted, and each map that, that is drawn, either as a draft map or as a final map, so that people can go, go on there and actually focus in on, on the districts, and they can very closely look at to, to see what streets, what communities, what parks, what schools are located in each district. So it's, it's, it's very interactive, and it, it will, it will be very detailed. There, on your current, currently on the website, I believe, is a map of your entire city, and you can go down and, and actually focus in and, and see where things are very specifically.
Doug, the question people want to know about the mapping tool is whether it will automatically add up the numbers for you, or whether you have to re-add them each time you move along.
The, the, the online tools will, will do that, yes. We also have paper tools, paper maps, that you have to add up yourselves, for, for those folks who are not inclined to use a computer-generated mapping tool.
But this online tool would add it up for you as you go along?
Absolutely.
Great, thank you.
Even I can't add as I'm going along. So we will have on, online, the interactive reviewing maps, the one, the paper map that we, that folks can use if they want to draw on paper and submit it here to City Hall. And then we will be using the Dave's Redistricting App for the online tool. Whether, whatever tool you use, or if you want to draw it on a napkin, bring it in, we, it will, we will, we will consider it. And here is that city map that I was talking about. This is the map review tool. We call it the interactive tool. It's similar, similar to Google Maps. You can focus in real, real tight. And then on the right-hand side, when we actually have maps to, to look at, we will have demographic factors there, so you can, you can, you can get those on your map, and you can look at them, and you will also be able to compare one map against another. This is the paper tool. It has population units with population numbers inside, so if you draw a map right over, right around your southern boundary there, you can just add up those little squares, and that will get you to however large your district is supposed to be. Again, trying to get, and there's a, a guide on the left as to how much, how many people should be in each, each district, depending on how many districts you're drawing. And when you're, when you make a decision as to what, how many districts we will be drawing, then we will limit, limit the, the guidance to that number. Anybody here use Dave's Redistricting in the last cycle? There's a Folsom guy in the back, so he knew, he, he used it. It, it's, it's very similar to a, a paper tool, but it, like I just told the mayor, it's, it's, it's an online tool, and it'll add up things for you automatically. And we'll have instructions on the website as to how to use it. We even have a video on the website of how to use it. So at this point, I think you, you should open a public hearing, so we can hear from the public. The things we are looking to hear are, what is your neighborhood? What are its boundaries? A discussion of how many districts we should draw, and whether there should be a mayor or elected citywide, or whether you're going to stay with your current system of electing a mayor every year amongst the, the council members. Questions about the mapping tools? I'd be happy to answer that, and answer anything about that. But it's, I wanted to emphasize that it's, it's very important that you do make a decision about how many districts you're going to draw as soon as possible, because that will allow your, your, your public to have an effective input as to how, as to how they, how districts should be drawn. If we don't have a decision on how many we're drawing, that's going to be deferred. Actual lines that we can talk about, or the public can talk about, is going to be deferred until that decision is made. So I, because we are on a rather tight schedule here, it's kind of important that you make that decision today.
So would you talk about the, the very last line on that slide?
Oh, if you decide to elect a mayor citywide, say, say like Elk Grove, you can have an, you should have an even numbered, this, number of districts, so that you have an, an odd-numbered council, therefore having to, so you can get a majority of, of three or however many you need on, on any particular vote. If you decide not to elect a mayor, then you can draw an odd number of districts, and then, then you will have what you currently have, which is an odd-numbered council, and you, you'll come up with a majority one way or another. So that's the only reason that, that, that's there.
Okay. Would you explain the difference between a directly elected mayor and a strong mayor? There is some confusion.
There's some confusion, and, and if you want to have a strong mayor, then that's a separate discussion and, and, and amendment to your charter, or whatever, whatever it is that governs your.
Which we don't have.
Whatever governs your, your governance here.
So the, so the point is, this is simply a person who is directly elected, but does not have any more power than the council members have currently?
That is correct. If you decide to have a directly elected mayor and, and have an odd number of districts, then you will have a mayor elected citywide, and for, just for example, four council members elected by district. That's what, that's what Elk Grove does.
Right. So then there is also some discussion about if we did not choose to go with a directly elected mayor at this point, what would be our options for doing that in the future?
I'll defer to your, your attorney on that question.
Adam.
Sure. If you did not go do a directly elected mayor, you, you could go, do so in the future. It would require a vote of the people to, to switch if you don't do it at this time. If you do it in the future, you can adjust, but those adjustments would go to the, to the voters. Again, the difference between a strong mayor, just to emphasize, and, and a, and a directly elected mayor, is, is essentially, is a directly elected mayor simply means every one of the council members would be representing a particular district based upon neighborhoods and other, of the factors that Doug explained, whereas the, the mayor, if it were, if it were a citywide mayor, would be, would be elected by, would be voted on by everyone in the city. So in that situation, the mayor sits on a council, and the mayor has the same right to vote, but they do speak for, in some, to some extent, all of the city, because all of the city had the opportunity to vote for them, whereas the, the individually district-elected council members, while they still served the entire city, they were only voted on by the individual voters in that district. So again, in a strong mayor system, it's quite different. When you adopt a strong mayor by charter, is you, you write a charter, you send the charter to the voters, and then in that, in writing that up, you're able to customize supplemental powers, or specific powers, that the mayor has that are different from those of the council members, that they, they either sit separate from, or, or to some extent have different specific authority than the council members individually.
Thank you, Adam. Okay, I'm going to ask my colleagues if they have any questions for you. Donald, Garrett, Siri, David?
Just a clarification on the criteria for drawing districts. You said it, I just want to be sure it's clear, that really the only criteria is what constitutes a neighborhood, and trying to keep neighborhoods together. There's no other driving factor that you're aiming for other than equal population and keep neighborhoods together.
The overriding factor is equal population. Your plan, your, your final set of districts must be within a 10% total deviation. That's plus or minus five. And you cannot discriminate against any protected voters groups. And generally, you should keep neighborhoods together, if they have, if they have been identified either by yourselves or by the, by the public.
If, if I may, I, I do think that the slide in front of you says it well, and it is more complex than you just said.
So, column two.
Yes, yes, column two. I mean, those, those, Doug, if I'm not mistaken, I mean, just to be clear to the, the Vice Mayor's question, all of those factors will be relevant to, and important for us to comply with in defining what the.
Yes. All of them are specified by the California Voting Rights Act, so if we draw a non-contiguous district, we're going to have problems. If we draw a non-compact district, we're going to have problems. Or if we divide a community. Or if we divide a community that was strongly in favor of having, being together, you may have problems.
Okay. All right. So at this point, we will open the public hearing. We do have people signed up for public comment already. There are speaker cards in the back of the room, lovely little blue cards, and Stacy would love to receive them. So Stacy, if you'll, you're going to take both the public comment here in the room and anybody who might be on Zoom.
Yes, and I'm going to share instructions on how to provide public comment via Zoom or telephone if you were joining us virtually.
Okay.
If you would like to make a public comment via teleconference and you're joining us by Zoom, you can use the raise hand feature that's located at the bottom of your screen. If you're participating by telephone and you'd like to make a public comment, please use the asterisk nine to raise your hand. And then, once I see your hand raised, I will go ahead and call on you. We'll start with those speaker cards that I have received for those individuals in the council chambers. If you do have a public comment card, you will give that to me and we will go ahead and we will start with James Garcia.
Okay. And for those of you who are not, who have not done this before, we do have a timer. It's in front of you on the dais and it will count down to three minutes. Welcome, James.
Hello. I'm James Garcia, member of Stone Creek neighborhood. I'm here to advocate for five districts and with the appointed mayor system. Still like to keep it that way. I don't see a need to change that and have a newly elected mayor. So that way would kind of keep it from having two actual seats on the council from the same district. If you were to go to a four district, you would have one mayor that would somehow sit in one of those other districts. So that would kind of put in an off-sided skew to the mix. So I just feel that, that we do need to keep it with the five distinct districts and have the appointed mayor. I would like it, actually, I know you said not, but paid positions and term limits for it. And also like to keep the current seats that would still be in office as of the 2024 election to stay in their seats. That would be yourself, Mattamare, and Garrett Gatewood as well, to be able to keep their seats, assuming that they fall within districts that are set forth. And the other three seats would be open up based upon the districts that are formed. So again, don't want to have the current incumbents that would still be entitled to their four-year term kicked out at this time. So that's pretty much my, my thing. I'd like to have the five.
Thank you, James. James just asked a really important question, Adam or Doug. Thank you, James. Adam or Doug, is the mayor, under five council districts, is the mayor elected truly at large or from one district or another?
No, if you were to decide to go to five districts and then have an appointed mayor amongst yourselves, as I believe you currently do, then there would be five districts and that, that, it would just be another member of the council who's made mayor.
But if there were four districts and a directly elected mayor, that person could live anywhere in the city?
That is correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Hey, real quick before you bounce, is the, the two positions, Linda and myself, and this may be a lawyer question, our position is stable for the next four years by law, correct?
Yes, that's something I, I tell state senators all the time who have four-year terms. You are elected to a four-year term. No one can take that away from you. If you're drawn into a different district that's numbered in a district, in a, in a.
Like, let's say it was crazy and I got drawn into a district with three other people or two other people. I couldn't get kicked out for at least another four years. Correct?
I'm sorry, does your term expire in four or six?
Four.
Four, then you would be.
Well, three years.
You could be, if you don't, if you don't run in that district, you would be.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Stacy.
Next public speaker will be Brenda Guston. Following Brenda will be Fiza Mughal, Helen Wayland-Bashaw, and then Tara Colvin-Bach.
Brenda, welcome.
Sorry, my foot fell asleep.
Oops.
Oh, geez. That's really funny. So I wanted to share that city council members have a great responsibility to become educated in a vast array of subjects and with a variety of neighborhoods and citizens in order to become familiar and acquainted with them. It's not an easy position to hold. I think it wise to spread these responsibilities between residents who live throughout the city and therefore represent the district within which they live is a very good idea. A question I have, though, is the inability to discuss projects within their district when they live within a 500-foot radius. How does this work? It seems to me that as a representative and resident, their voice is important and that only their vote should be limited to the 500-foot radius recusal. Regarding term limits, I think it wise to allow terms of no less than four years to enable the necessary education required to weigh in on the many projects of which they were responsible. And a median income wage is a good idea so that council members may focus on the multitude of projects of which they were responsible. And I suggest median income to offer so that it attracts people who want to be of service rather than applying for status and high wages and benefits. I think it's a great idea to save resources spent on elections. Therefore, I'm in favor of the district council members rotating into the mayoral and vice mayoral positions. That's incomplete.
Thank you. Thank you, Brenda. So Fiza was next. Fiza, welcome.
I'm Fiza Mughal from Lincoln Village, and I want to say that I did read the entirety of the attorney Scott Refetti's letter to this council petitioning to move to districts. It resonated with me very strongly. One of the items in his letter was a bar graph representing sort of the demographic that is overrepresented here in this body. And it happens to be the same demographic that you see behind me in this room. And that leads me to this postcard that I didn't receive until Saturday night, and I'm hearing from a lot of folks, they haven't received theirs yet. So I feel like the noticing is inadequate. A little alarmed to hear the gentleman before me giving the presentation saying that you needed to decide today on, or preferably today, on the number of districts. And I feel like adequate noticing hasn't been done, which will lead to inadequate participation from the very demographic that is prompting the California Voting Rights Act right now. And these lovely translators are wasted in the back of this room. Not one person has asked for those services today out of this room. What are we doing to go out into the community on this very, very tight timeline to really pull from the community that should be engaged, needs to be engaged, and traditionally has not been engaged? The very reason for us having this discussion in the first place. So having said that, I also don't appreciate seeing up in the presentation what I should and should not address in this discussion, because even though we are discussing districting, we do have to remember that we are the client. And a lot of us are asking for wages, term limits, and those things. You have the ability to put that on a future agenda item for discussion, so I do request that that be done. Aside from that, I am in favor of an odd number of districts. Musical mayors, I love that, it's fine. And of course, I would like to say about Lincoln Village, we have natural boundaries being on the butt end of the city in a way. We're county on one side, county on the other side, major thoroughfares on either side. We are kind of boxed up. It's a matter of friend numbers games. Are we spreading north or spreading east? But of course, Lincoln Village and Countryside should always remain together. Other than that, you'll probably hear more from me in some of the community sessions, but I really do wish you would go into the community and make a real effort. I want to see that same 20-year anniversary, anniversary energy put into what's happening here, and I need to see you out on these streets. Thank you.
Thank you, Farza. I think Helen was next. Welcome, Helen.
Hi. I'm Helen Wayland-Bashaw, and I'm from the Tiffany area. First off, I think it's inappropriate to come to this meeting and have a later-on number be moved forward. That's a disservice to any person who intended to come later because it was at the tail end of the agendas. Enough said on that. I believe there should be five districts. I believe that we should have as the rotating mayor as we have now. I also believe that it should be a medium income based on what is determined to be the average income of the residents in Rancho Cordova, because you do not want people to jump at an opportunity based on the salary they're going to get. I, I do believe that there should be some term limits, but I do believe there should be no less than a four-year term, because your job is real important. People don't mature in a position until after about two to four years in any, any industry. So I believe that the mayor, the council people should be at least two term limits of four years each. I believe that we need to look more at the demographics in, in certain areas, because I believe certain groups are underrepresented in the city. Let me see. With that, I think I'll just close for now, because I'm looking forward to the future meetings. It, it's real important that we get out of having three people represent the community as a whole, living in the same neighborhood. You, you're representing a high-income area and the low-income people are the ones who are suffering right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Helen. And just to clear up the timing, this, this, this particular agenda item was advertised for 6:30. I think Tara's next.
Following Tara will be Otis Scott. Following Otis will be Robert Hanson and Gerald Clemens.
Tara, welcome.
Hi, I'm Tara Colvin-Bach from Stone Creek. Mayor, council members, I have just a couple of questions. First, on that online tool, how, if I go on that online tool, how am I going to create the districts if we don't know what the new populations will be in the one area? How will that work? So I'm confused. I mean.
Stay tuned.
Okay. I mean, I, I thought I was the only one. Okay. So I'm worried about that, because I don't know what I'm going to do on that online tool, you know, what kind of things I'm going to do. Okay. So, and then another thing with that is that when we're doing these maps and everything, when we put them all together, how are they going to be weighed against one another? Is it the number of people that have the same squiggles? I mean, how are we going to do this?
Stay tuned.
Okay. All right. Okay, so I'm in favor of the five districts, no strong mayor, rotating mayor, just like we do today. I think the council members should live in the district that they represent. I do think there should be pay increase, because I looked at the other cities and they pay you guys a lot more. So you should be paid more. But you guys can figure that out, okay? But I do think there should be term limits, maybe 12-years kind of thing to get new blood in, but those are just my comments. But I really appreciate all your efforts in, in being council members. I know it's a tough job, so thank you.
Thank you, Tara. Otis, welcome. It's so nice to see you again.
Thank you. Same here.
It's been a long time.
Too long, Mayor. Too long. Good evening, Mayor Budge and members of the session. My name's Otis Scott, excuse me, Scott, and I live in the metro section of California, or Rancho Cordova, and have been a resident of that geographical area since 1971. I think I have more questions than the statements, but I do agree with those who preceded me here, that attention should be paid closely to the concentrated areas in Rancho Cordova, where there are lower socioeconomic and working-class residents. And in fact, no one likes to use the word, but there are many people in Rancho who are poor. And I think we should keep that in mind when we start drawing boundaries. I, I think that the major stakeholders in this whole process are citizens of Rancho Cordova, the residents. And I'm wondering if any consideration is being given, or will be given, to having resident representation on the bodies that begin to craft and fine-tune the redistricting, the districting proposal. I also believe that consideration should be made, again, because we are the major stakeholders to, consideration given to submitting to the stakeholders for their approval or not the final proposals, because they do affect us, you of course, but the citizens of the community directly. I will close by applauding the council, because I think it's high time that this issue, this matter has come before us.
Please wrap up your comments.
And I look forward to participating in whatever way I can in addressing and resolving this important issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Otis. Welcome, Robert.
Thank you. Good evening, council members. My name is Robert Hanson. I've lived in Rancho since I was about this big. I was your last notice guy that got this card today. So I have all questions. You don't know what to ask about what you don't know about, and that's the way I kind of feel right now. So I'll just, if, my note-taking wasn't fancy enough, so I don't understand the voting by district. I think that's where the districts all just vote for somebody to cover them throughout the whole area, and then the one above that, and I apologize, I don't know the name, that was where you voted for somebody who lived in your district. Is that correct?
So like, district voting is like, so Anatolia would be, like, let's say that was a district, right? Anyone in Anatolia could run for that seat, and then they would be the council member.
And they would have, but they would have to live in Anatolia.
Correct.
That's one.
Correct. That'd be one. And then like, let's say we had Lincoln Village was one, it would be the Lincoln Village District, and then what, the person would have to live in Lincoln Village and come out of Lincoln Village, and that would be like council member number two. And then we, and what you're going to do is get this cool thing that allows you to draw circles and kind of build the districts.
Right. You understand all that.
Okay.
I just, I just, it was kind of like when we got to the by-district, it wasn't, wasn't explained, the by-district part, and so I, I didn't understand the difference between the two is all. the two as all.
So right now, we're trying to decide between five council members?
Yeah, we'll ask the consultant to go back over that.
Okay, that's fine. So, people have been speaking to five districts. Maybe that's because we have five council members up here, including the mayor. And is it your plan to add more districts? Well, I haven't heard any, no, I didn't hear any talk about, about what the city council's plan is for-
That's one of the discussion items tonight.
And we don't have to just do five. We could do seven.
Yeah, well-
We could do nine. It's kind of more, we're trying to listen to all of you guys and say, what do you really want?
Okay, so I understand that. So, so my question would be, how are we, right now, the city has a budget for everybody sitting here, and I think we're doing a pretty good job money-wise in our city. So, you know, what happens if we want to add three more? Where's that money coming from? How do we pay for that? You know, I mean, that's-
Yeah, that's, that's-
Something that's, because I hear talking about pay and everything, you know, and, and you know-
No, that's a different, that's a different subject that's not on the agenda tonight.
Okay, perfect. Then I won't ask that question.
We're not getting paid.
Uh, let's see. My last thing would be, when will the, when will the online map be up and running? Because I looked at it yesterday and-
Sir, this is on TV, so you want to talk into the mic so that we, so that they can actually have it recorded? Make sure you're talking into the mic.
Oh, sorry. The online map for doing the districts, I went on it today, and it was non-operational.
We'll ask the consultant to go back, to go over that, too.
And so I, yeah, I don't know.
Yes, I think we've all been asked that question, so I'll ask the consultant.
Thank you for your time.
Next speaker is Gerald Clemens.
Gerald, welcome.
Good evening. Gerald Clemens, a longtime Rancho Cordova resident since 1964.
When you were also that tall?
Actually, I was just slightly under him, but known him since seventh grade.
Cool.
No, thanks. Anyway, I think a couple of things I wanted to just bridge the subject of is, one, I didn't know about districting until my friend told me about it, and of course, my first question was, is, I don't remember voting on that. Don't remember anything about that. So it kind of surprised me because usually everything that happens, we all want to say-so in it. What, do we like that or not, a law, whatever? Didn't see that. Second thing is, is I'm all about, don't like taxes, like to pay less taxes. So if it costs more, I'm kind of against it. And I want smaller government, so I don't want more people. I want, I want less. So I'm all about less districts, like three. Because we don't want to pay more. We want more money for people, and infrastructure, police, fire department, and less of everything else. So it all kind of caught me on the side. I'm glad I got some information tonight to hear some of the things they're talking about. And it sounds like there's going to be a bit of a process, so we involve everyone, everybody gets to say-so, and we don't just veer off the track, and we're not dictated as to how things are going to go versus a situation where we all have a democratic voice in our voting on how we want things to go, and that process drives us to the end result that we're going to have, and not just somebody saying, here's how it's going to be for this or that. That's kind of all I wanted to say. Thank you.
That was the purpose of the postcard. There's a whole host of meetings coming up in August and September, culminating in a decision on the second of October, and so the idea was to alert everybody to what the timeframe was.
I'll look forward to being in a bunch of those meetings, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Sergio Diaz. Following Sergio will be Susan Jones, and then Lupe Hernandez.
Sergio, welcome.
Thank you, Linda. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. I've lived in Rancho Cordova for approximately 35 years, and I'm glad we're discussing redistricting. I think it's very important. I think you all recognize that Rancho Cordova is very economically and ethnically diverse. There's significant income disparity among the different groups here in Rancho Cordova. My hope is that redistricting provides and alleviates some of the chasm that seems to exist in the areas of Rancho Cordova. North of Folsom Boulevard is one Rancho Cordova. South of Folsom Boulevard is a very different, Folsom is a very different city, and that disparity seems to be growing. The redistricting that I hope to see is one that provides all the citizens of Rancho Cordova with a voice, with a council member that is, can be held accountable to that particular citizens who live in that particular district, so that that council member feels responsible for those council, for those citizens who live in their particular district. With that, I think that the citizens may have somebody that they can actually go to, and that that city council person knows that their willingness and ability to address those concerns will definitely determine whether they sit as part of this body or not. Well, right now, it's a shared responsibility, and I think some of the citizens of Rancho Cordova are not being represented as they should be. Regarding the appointed mayor that's been discussed here, I think that the way that the council has operated in the past is that the responsibilities have been shared, the number of council people, you know, sometimes there's one mayor, then there's another, but it's the same group. So maybe allowing the citizens to select the mayor and to actually have a greater voice may be the better way to go with redistricting. It is the future, and perhaps it provides the best answer for the citizens of Rancho Cordova to have a voice in their government. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sergio. Susan Jones? Welcome, Susan.
My name is Susan Jones, and I've been here for approximately 45 years in this community. I love it. I came here because it was people, it was an area for people for all, all demographics, all this income levels, but all people that wanted to be here. It's a very strong community. And I like the board. I like the way you have put it together. I like the way you forged for it and made us a city, and we all appreciate it. I don't want to change that. I want to keep it like it is. And I don't think we're that big. I don't think we're that big where we can't handle what we've handled for all this time. You're doing a great job. Thank you. I appreciate it, and I know a lot of people do. I like it here because there's so many people that I feel like they're my neighbors. And I, I don't, you go into other communities and you feel the arrogance, you feel the deficiencies, you feel, you feel it. You don't feel that here. I think this vote is coming too fast. I just found out about it today myself. I just got home, got my mail, and here I am. I mean, it was only an hour or so before I could actually absorb this. It is an important, very important step. I don't know, right now, I don't agree with it. I want to keep it as it is. It's not necessary. I don't know what brought us to this conclusion in the first place, but it's too early and too fast for such a, a very, very important thing. I cherish my election. I cherish my right to vote, and I just want to keep it that way for all its citizens. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Susan.
You're welcome.
Lupe, welcome.
Good afternoon. Hello, everybody.
Hello, Lupe.
City council people. I'm not going to, there's, I'm not going to repeat what's already been said, but it's the right time to do it. What you're doing right now and the way we're doing voting is not compliant with the California Voters' Rights Act. It is not compliant. When someone refers to me as "my people," that's very arrogant and very, very, it just makes me cringe. I want better representation for everybody, not just for myself. I live in Sun River. I've lived in Rancho Cordova 47 years. We moved here because of low-income housing. We were there two years, and we got out and we bought a house for $42,000. The thing is, is that when we, when we bought in the White Rock area, it was mainly Hispanics and African-American residents. Living in, if we needed anything done, we had to go to the county, and we got great reception and feedback from Toby Johnson and Donna Toly. Each time, we got excellent representation and, and great service. Within the city right now, it's not exactly what we expected when we, when we served on the incorporation committee to make Rancho a city. We wanted representation. We don't have it now in Sun River, only because we have a Facebook page, and most of you are on that Facebook page or on the Sun River email group. All of you are on that group. So if a light goes out or doesn't function correctly at Trinity and Sunrise Boulevard, unless in three days, that light is fixed. But anywhere else, any part of the city, if it was Lincoln Village, if it was White Rock or Cordova Villa, nothing would get accomplished because they are not connected. Most people that are on social media have Facebook, and they have other means to connect with folks. I don't call up my representative because I don't have one in my community where I live. I'm not going to call any one of you. I don't like being ignored. I don't like people that need representation being ignored. They need districts. They need someone in their own community, in their own neighborhood, that can speak on their behalf. If I'm boring you, you know, just don't look at me. But this is what really happens in the world out there, not in a gated community.
Please wrap up your comments.
Not in a pretty neighborhood way out in the boon docks or in another fancy neighborhood. We need people like us that represent us. Thank you.
And before you, before you go, Lupe, how many you want? Five? Or you thinking seven council members?
We need more than five. We need better representation.
I'd say like seven.
We need better representation, seven. And there needs to be term limits, and there needs to be residency requirements so that some carpetbagger doesn't move from one area to another so they can qualify for that election. It's happened in the past. I've seen that, and it's still happening, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Lupe.
Stacy? Next speaker is Danielle Cummings.
Danielle, welcome.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Danielle Cummings from the Capital Village neighborhood. I wanted to speak in support of the, at the very least, of five districts and having the mayor rotate as we do now. I'd also have a couple of questions that I don't think were addressed in the presentation. One of them is, if the council makes a decision, since it is the council making the decision about the districts and how many there will be, and whether or not it will be mayor-strong or it will be a rotating mayor, what happens if the community is not happy with that decision? Is there any recourse for us?
We'll ask the consultant that.
Thank you. And then my other question is in regards to somewhat what Lupe was alluding to in regards to people moving into a particular neighborhood. So since the term limits currently, I believe they're, I believe it's a four-year term, if the, if someone moves into a particular neighborhood and is elected in that neighborhood, in that district, as the representative, if they move before their term is completed, do we then vote on someone else, or does that person allow to serve in another area of the city while they're still representing that particular neighborhood? I just, I just, a couple of questions that I'm not sure have been addressed yet. Thank you.
We'll ask that one.
Given controversies in surrounding jurisdictions, I'm pretty sure they had to maintain residency in the district.
Yeah. I actually sat on the fireboard for two years because the gentleman who represented this area had moved to Elk Grove, and they appointed, they needed to appoint somebody to take his place. Yeah. Next.
I'm going to move to Zoom now, and Anil Reddy, I have unmuted you, and you'll have up to three minutes to speak.
Welcome, Anil.
Good evening, Mayor, council, and my fellow residents. And the reason I specifically said residents, I think the speakers before me, I think everybody was referring to a citizen. And ensuring the interest of non-registered voters and non-citizens are very important in the redistricting process, because as elected officials, when you make a decisions that affects the entire community, not just those who can vote. I think so, I think Supreme Court gave a clear direction in one of the judge, I guess, I do not remember exactly. So redistricting boundaries should be based on the total population rather than the number of registered voter. And so if you take that approach, it will acknowledge that everyone, regardless of the citizenship status, deserve the representation. And city also needs to engage the community organization, specifically those who serve these populations. I think you're doing a good job on that one. You also brought the Spanish translator and Russian translator, and I also urge council to engage some of those nonprofit organizations who actively champion these residents in the city. And these, and the community meetings that you're trying to do it only in the city hall, I think that's not a good idea, because you guys need to conduct these public meetings and hearings in the areas where citizens are, non-citizens or the population of residents are living, because these meetings can be more accessible, provide interpretation services, and, you know, it helps them to a convenient time for working families. And again, a lot of residents doesn't, not have a familiarity with redistricting process. I think education is very important. I know we have the tight timelines, but we should, we should take more time to educate our community members. And the other thing is, again, a lot of our residents have a mistrust because of how the communication is happening right now, the transparent communication, and make sure all information, maps, data related to redistrictings are available in multiple languages, and, you know. And I think, I think there's another also option to appoint a diverse redistricting commissions, where, you know, you can get more inputs from the community, and, yeah. As a summary, right, what I would say, please proactively ensure engagement of the every residence, their voice needs to be part of the redistricting process, so that policymakers, you can build a trust within these communities and ensure that everyone interests are considered when redrawing the district boundaries. Thank you.
Thank you, Anil.
Mayor Budge, that's all the public comment that I have for this item.
Okay. Did anybody change their mind and decide to turn in a speaker card? Okay. Then we'll close the public hearing. And there were several questions that were asked, so Doug, if you want to come back up, and you and Adam can, can split these. There was a question about understanding that the city council will adopt whatever, will vote to adopt whatever is selected. Who, who's the group, who's the committee, whatever, that's actually going to put a plethora of maps together and recommend something forward?
Two different sources. If any, if any resident of the community wishes to submit a map, they may do so, and they will be able to do so on the website that we've discussed. If they draw one of those maps using the online tool, there's a specific instruction, you have to tell us what, what the, basically give us the URL so we'll know where to find it, and then we can download it and place it on, on the website so everybody can- And then we can download it and place it on, on the, uh, website so everybody can see it.
When you say something has a URL, that frightens me that, um, maybe everybody's maps gets an individual URL.
Correct. When you, when you draw a map on, on Dave's redistricting, uh, and, and it, it gives you a, a, a URL so we can all find that on the, on the, on the internet. It's, it's on the internet. It's way, it's, it's out there. But in order to find it, in order to post it on your city website, you have to tell us what your URL is. And the, these instructions are included on the, the website that we have.
Well, I'm sure Anil and Garrett and Donald and Siri are fine with that. The rest of us might be a little less comfortable with that.
Can you talk a little bit about what happens with the paper versions that are submitted to as part of the process?
The paper versions is what we will, what we will do is, is, is take a photo and, and actually place them on your website. But if I can, I will try to interpret that into a electronic form so that we can all look at it and then place it on the interactive map so everybody can look at it really closely.
Okay, so then, um, who's the committee or whatever that winnows twenty-four maps down to four?
They're sitting right here. We will, you will, we will have maps submitted by the public. We will place them on the, on the website so, so everybody can see them at your, at your, your next hearing, not the next hearing because we can't discuss maps at the first two hearings. We have to wait for the public to, to absorb the process and be able to put maps out. Uh, then, we, um, so we'll place any map that a member of the public draws on the website. I will put together some draft maps so that those can be considered as well. And, uh, so that, that's how we, we gain the number of, of ideas of, of how we might do this. And, and I'm not make, going to make a decision as to which map is best. Uh, that's a decision that's left to the city council.
Okay, so we're going to come to a meeting where we slide through maps.
So, uh, that'll be the third meeting.
Yeah, meeting number three is really a collection of all the maps that have been submitted from, from the community and that's where the council will have the opportunity to, to review and narrow down the maps at that. That is the longer map discussion meeting on the third.
If you have, if you have fifty maps, we're going to review fifty ideas?
That is correct.
Correct.
But you may, you may, they will analyze and talk to you about some of the maps. If, if they're, if you're submitted a map, for example, that has five people and it clearly doesn't meet the residency requirement, then that would be addressed, but quickly, um, quickly.
Discarded.
If, if there's a map submitted that's not what we call compliant, if it's, if it's unbalanced in a, in a population way, basically, uh, we will note that on the map that we post so that everybody knows this is a map, but we really can't look at it because it's not compliant to the equal, equal population standards.
So quick question on, on the districts, right? Five, seven or nine? Is there like a cutoff by which we need to decide? I know you said recommend today, but, and you're saying we need to go through all fifty maps on, when we need to review them. Is there like a cutoff point that we need to decide the five, seven or nine?
It's kind of a legal question.
Yeah, so the, the way, the way we would describe this is, um, it in part becomes, so let me, if I may, can I step, a, a step back and talk about the whole process for a second and then, and then kind of build to that? Um, one of the questions that was asked was, why, why are you going so fast? How did this start? And, and again, this, this started because, um, a lawyer representing a group of people in the city filed a letter and filed a petition. And, and then the city would have, the response has a legal requirement to respond to that by either saying, yes, we're going to start this process of transitioning to districts or not. And if we had, if the city had said no, then the city would have been subject to, to immediate litigation. And on the other hand, um, and I, I just want to clarify, you know, one comment that the consultant made, um, it's not that the city will lose. It's more that so far every city has lost. So, um, the, um, um, cities have not been successful when they've challenged and said no to these petitions. So, so then the question is, well, why are you going so fast right now? Does, if it feels to the community like the city's going fast? And, and that's because, um, um, we, the, the statute is very tight. The statute is very specific. And the statute says you have to do a whole lot of outreach, a whole lot of specific community meetings and you have to do the process in a very particular order. And if you don't do it within a set amount of time, which for us ends in October, then, um, then the city can get sued. And it's not the, the be-all, end-all if the city gets sued. The biggest thing that would happen if the city got sued is the city would lose control of this process. Right now, the, the, you know, Doug said correctly, the decision maker for the maps is ultimately going to be you all submitting lots of comments, lots of ideas, giving lots of input. And then the council, informed by the consultant, informed by legal advice, deciding what, what of those maps will comply with the law and deciding what would be the best. If you get sued, if you, if you say, forget the deadlines, we're going to take the time we need to do this. This is a really important process. We're not going to be pushed around by these dates or the lawyers. What would happen is the city would get sued and then the court, not the council, would decide which maps. So the court would get presented with maps by the plaintiffs and by the others. And the court would ultimately be the one that decides what the districts are going to be, not the city council. There would be some influence in that decision. There would be arguments that would be made. But, but if we decide, if the council decides within this, what feels like or can feel like a short timeline, amount of time, then the council representing you all will get to make the decision. The, the, the second piece of that is, why go fast is, is right now by, by statute, by clear statute, the city only has to pay approximately thirty-seven, forty thousand dollars in, in legal fees to the plaintiff who filed this petition if the city gets through this process in a legal and timely way. In general, in other communities, if you don't, the day after you miss the deadline, the city gets sued and then you're into settlement mode. And in other communities, as soon as you get there, it costs generally for settlement at least a quarter of a million dollars. So the, the numbers, so, so there's a, there's both a very practical control reason to go quickly and then, and then the, the functional reason. And then to, to get back to why decide, I hope that took, was a bit of a roundabout way to get back to Councilmember Poyet's question. Why decide? Why is there a, a, a strong encouragement, um, to get to this decision of how many districts and, uh, at-large or, 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 or district elected or council-appointed mayor, rather? And that's because, um, for you all to write maps, it's much more complicated. If you don't know if you're writing, if you want to participate in the process, if the community wants to participate in the process, do they, should you all be writing? It takes time, it takes energy, it takes a lot of thought. We trust people will do this with a, a, a very earnest consideration. And if the council doesn't decide for a meeting or two, then by the time you get to this critical third meeting where you're going to be starting to decide what maps the public submitted do you want, you're going to be asking the public to have given you five, seven or nine. And, and the same people with the same ideas might be submitting lots and lots of different kinds of maps. So I, I, I do want to emphasize that it's not that you have to make that decision. It's just that as a practical and functional matter, it gets kind of, it gets kind of geometrically or Mr. Sander can tell me algebraically or calculaically or, um, somewhat more complicated. Int integrally, I'm not sure what, I'm.
I think you're struggling for exponential, but I think it's, but I think it's more of a linear.
That's a lawyer joking about being bad.
I think it's more of a linear relationship.
So it just gets more complicated and the public has more demands if, if you don't make this decision.
This is the kind of humor you get with a JD and a PhD trying to go back and forth with each other.
That's right.
Doctor to doctor.
Okay, so the, um, so Siri, is it good? Okay, so then the companion to that question is, um, when will this tool be online? And, um, and is, is not, is, um, uh, training on how to use this tool part of the subject of Thursday night's community forum here?
I will demonstrate this tool on Thursday night.
Great.
Um, and by that time, we will have it, we will have, have it set up so that, uh, anybody can, can use it. And hopefully, we will have the number of districts settled.
Okay, so the last question, I think, was, um, what happens if the community, a certain, a significant number of people rise up and disagree with the map that the city council adopts?
The, you, you will be enacting this, uh, whatever district, whatever map you decide. You'll enact it by ordinance. And I believe that ordinances are subject to referenda.
Correct.
So if somebody objects, they can, they can go out and petition and try to get it on the ballot.
Oh, interesting, okay.
Just like it would happen in any city for any ordinance that you enact.
Could you answer another question that I think a lot of members of the public were commenting on? Because it's relatively the, the exact same answer. Term limits, compensation? Trying to think what else? I think that was it. I mean, there, there's going to be a residency requirement. I've heard that a bunch of times, like the fact that we're doing this, you're going to have to live in that district and establish a residency. But compensation and term limits?
Can I, Doug, can I take a shot?
So, yeah, so go ahead.
So that we make sure we address it kind of within the structure of this meeting, so.
And, and, and let's also be clear that I believe a majority, not me, but a majority of this council has already requested a hearing on compensation. But go ahead.
Yeah, um, so, um, the city is a general law city. The city doesn't have a charter. Charters are adopted by, um, by, by a charter going to the voters and a, and a particular process. Um, this particular petition that we have and that we have to respond to within this timeframe, um, doesn't, doesn't include the time to write a charter. Um, it doesn't include the time to, so it doesn't, within this timeframe and structure, doesn't include the, the timeline to switch to a strong mayor. Um, that is not to say that the city cannot do that. It would just have to do it in addition. You would have to do it somewhat separate from and in addition to this process. And it, and, and it might be that you would first be in district elections and then you would be transitioning to the full implementation of, of the charter after it's adopted. Um, what a charter gets you that a general law city doesn't get you is, is, um, the ability to have different powers for a mayor. It gets you the ability to pay, um, the compensation that you want for your elected officials. So, um, when a, right now, just on the kind of fiscal impact, let me answer the council compensation question in terms of the fiscal impact of adding seats. Right now, the council, in reality, in nowhere in the state, councils are set up as, in general law cities, as essentially semi-volunteer positions. In cities this size, the current cap is nine hundred dollars a month plus benefits, plus going to conferences and, you know, getting, getting, they have the key to the snack.
And we don't make that, that's what it's up to.
It's, it's up to, exactly. It's, it's limited to that. So it's sort of snacks and benefits and, and, and a very, very low compensation. That is going, that's going up for the first time in about forty years. That cap is going up for cities Rancho Cordova's size to nineteen hundred dollars effective next year. And the council hasn't said, yes, we're going to increase your compensation, but they did. We talked about that and they said we would be bringing that back for a discussion in the beginning of January. So, um, unless the city switches to a, um, or gives direction that it wants to do a charter separate from this process. And, and the last thing I would say is, this, you know, this process gives essentially a, a expedited, um, fast-track way to changing districts. If you, if you do changes like this outside of this process, then they would normally go through to a full election. I mean, it kind of deliberately creates, essentially, Doug, I would describe it as a bit of a, a fast-track process to change districts in response to this sort of petition. Would you supplement that in any, any ways?
No, 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 I would not. And I, I, I'm not here to advise you on, on any of those topics. I'm just a line drawer. I just draw districts.
You do more than that, but.
And, and counts.
The one other question I think that was asked that we don't have an answer for yet was who, who's counted on the map? Is it voters or residents?
Residents.
Residents.
Everybody who was counted in the census in two thousand is included, will be included in the database that we use to draw districts.
Regardless if you're eligible to vote.
Regardless.
And, and the other one was, yes, you have to maintain residency.
Right, if, if, if we draw districts, uh, whoever runs in that district has to live in that district and must maintain their residency.
And stay in that district.
And if anyone's wondering how that gets applied or who looks into it, you can just look at the city to the east and the west of here have both had investigations of members about where they lived.
Yeah.
During their terms and while they were running and after they got elected.
And just to clarify, the, the population is based on the two thousand census, so the numbers of people know as the population.
Twenty, twenty.
I mean, two thousand.
Two thousand twenty.
Twenty, twenty. So what is that number then, Doug, for the?
Uh, I'd have to go back to my presentation.
Because I just want to make sure that you're, you know, kind of coming up with the right numbers for those, for those numbers.
We're eighty-one now, so it was like seventy-nines.
Yeah, because I heard somebody say sixty thousand and that was, it's bigger than that. It's twenty thousand, or it's eighty thousand closer to.
Okay, any, Siri?
I think the gentleman had a question about, you know, by districting the vote, like if you have to stay in the district and people of that district have to vote and the other option is they have to stay in that district and everybody in the city can vote.
Right, uh, Elk Grove did that for years where we had districts, but, uh, everybody in the city got to vote. They, they transitioned from that to a by-district.
And why did they transition to that?
Because they didn't want to get sued.
Well, they got threatened to be sued for exactly this. So if you go to that, we probably get sued anyways.
And then, of course, they, um, immediately drew district lines and elected somebody, so. At any rate, any additional questions? Okay, Doug, thank you very much.
You're certainly welcome.
We appreciate it. We appreciate you all coming and, um, we invite everybody to come back.
Hey, really quick, really quick, before you bounce out, there is no way to ask the gentleman that's doing the lawsuit to give us more time, correct?
No.
Well.
That's in the law.
Thank you, Linda.
No, it's in the, it's in the law.
The law degree made me want to answer that.
Just, just a question. I mean, is there a way for us to get a little bit more time so I could, like, go out and talk to, all right?
Mayor, I see some people in the public wanted raising their hands, I think.
Well, there, uh, but there will be, um, but we did close the public hearing and we do have a forum on Thursday. And an awful lot of this, a lot, awful lot of these questions will be answered then. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you all for coming. Five-thirty, five-thirty in the American River Room on Thursday night. Okay.
So we're not going to talk about?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, no, all right.
No, no, we're not taking a break.
No, you're right. We, I'm sorry, item number two on that agenda is.
We weren't just asking questions tonight.
Yeah, no, item number two on that agenda. In that agenda item is, do we want to express an opinion tonight about the number of districts?
I'll start. Um, so I, I think a couple of things that, that I've observed, especially over the last six-ish years, but in the last two election cycle, that this council has gotten more diverse. I know, I, I started off on the city council living in the countryside neighborhood, which was Lincoln Village countryside was referenced earlier tonight. I was a renter and so it wasn't easy to stay living where I was living. So I also lived a year in Sun River and then I moved to the South. Um, at the time, I was the only council member in the South. Since then, we've added, again, diversity to my right here on this council. And I think that's a good thing and I think it's important to, to try to maintain that. So as I look at kind of the conversations and things that have come tonight, and again, this is not a timeline of our choosing. We are in some ways being forced to do this. And I know that there's folks that want this to take longer and everything and I probably would agree too, but that's not how the law is written. So as I, as I look at some of these questions, and again, I'm going to weigh in on a couple of things that we can't talk about tonight, but I think it's important to understand as we go further into these conversations, if, if you look at the city of Sacramento, and they're compensated significantly more than any other city council in this region, and only certain people and certain types of people with certain types of careers can run for those offices, so that they either work in the capital, they're self-employed or they're lobbyists, or they're retired. Because if I was expected to be here three days a week and making $70,000, I wouldn't have the job that I have. So as we talk about some of these things, it's like, yeah, you should be compensated, you should be here more often, certain people have certain lifestyles and careers that accommodate that, and others don't. And so whether it's highly compensated or less compensated, it allows certain people to be able to do certain things and other people couldn't. So I hope we keep that all in mind, that, that when you expect somebody, I mean, literally, I can tell you, I have friends that were on the SAC City Council that had to quit their jobs and had to find other things to do, because as soon as they were elected, their employer was questioning that, you know, their commitment to the job that they had. And some of us have experienced that in our careers over, over time. So, and again, we're going to talk about that at another point, and I wasn't for having higher compensation. I'll start with the directly elected mayor. Because out of all of the cities that have gone through this process, Elgrove was the only one that chose to go to a directly elected mayor. And I think there's a whole bunch of reasons not to emulate that city that a lot of us have talked about over the years, but Folsom, Citrus Heights, trying to think of who else that's gone through this recently, they all chose to stick with a rotating mayor. One of the things that it does is, I wouldn't say forces, but it encourages council members to get along, because you need your colleagues to vote for you to become mayor, to become vice mayor, when your rotation comes around. And I think, while we may disagree with each other at different times, the collegialness that we have shown here does not exist in a lot of other local governments. I can tell you, when I was on the school board for SAC City Unified, we did not get along, hardly ever. And it was very much a five-two board at different points. And we were rotating it too, but, but it was the little fiefdom of who had those votes to be chair. It was not a rotation, it was not an expectation that, you know, if you get reelected at some point, it's going to be your turn. I think that's healthy for this government, I think it's, it encourages cooperation and getting along with each other. So at this, and I would also say, if you look at the cities that have a directly elected mayor, the lightning rod that that position creates, I, I don't think it's healthy. So personally, I'm against a directly elected mayor at this time. Number of districts, and I have not looked at any maps, I have not had anybody run maps for me, but I believe that if we went to seven or nine, although I think I would prefer seven, with a rotating mayor, I think we have the best chance of preserving the diversity that we've gained in the last five or six years. So with that, that, those are my preferences in moving forward. And again, to Siri's question, if we don't decide tonight and we start this process of map making with three, I mean, literally, you could say five, seven, or nine council members with no mayor, that's one version. You could have a directly elected mayor with four, six, or eight, right? So now you have six different versions of maps that you could be writing if we don't decide tonight. And then we're going to send the public out there with this new tool and say, you have six versions you could come up with, and keep going at those maps, and you said 50 maps. And I'm guessing most everyone in here is going to draw a map, right? Who's planning on drawing at least a map? Okay, so, so, so my question, my question, not necessarily that I need an answer to, but would you rather know that it's X number tonight when you walk out? Or do you want to be guessing out of six different versions that we might decide in the next three weeks? So again, the timeline isn't ours, but we can either send you on your way tonight to start working on a certain set of maps, or you could go work on all of them and we'll tell you later which ones we're going to, we're going to pay. So it, for my opinion, I would say seven, I think makes the most sense. I think it preserves the diversity that's been gained, and I don't think we need a directly elected mayor, yet.
Thank you, Donald. Garrett?
So, well, first off, I hate the timeline because I don't feel like I've heard from enough people, and honestly, I've, I mean, I love everyone here, but I've heard, like, I wanted to hear what everyone wanted, and I've got like 12 people to come up and talk, and so I really want to know where everyone sees it. You know, like, I like the idea of five, because I'm used to that, I like the idea of seven, if it, as we grow and we grow into it, but it would be nice to have heard from more of everybody as a group. I will not, just so everyone knows, I will not be at the next meeting on the 14th, so if you would like to tell me your ideas, what everyone should realize, that we could all tell you exactly what we want, and then we could go to the meeting and change our minds completely. That's what the thing is, that's, that's the power of the council at this point, it doesn't matter what, we can go with all the ideas, but if in the end, we feel that we want seven, and this is the way the district wants, we want it to grow, and we pick someone's map, we could go in that direction, even though we've told you five. So in that way, I think everyone should draw multiple maps with multiple sizes, so we can all start to work on this together and then come to those meetings, so we can all make a better decision than kind of pigeonhole you guys into a five or a seven or leave you in that direction, because in the end, it's, you know, I work for you and I've heard, you know, most of the people here want the five, and then one person want the seven. And so I kind of don't know where you guys are falling about what you want, I happen to be one of those people that has three people in their district, so it will be closed off at some point. So I'm interested to hear how you guys would like to see your city drawn. So, I'm really curious on why everyone out there really doesn't want, and it may be because everyone gets super toxic, but I thought we were big enough now that we wanted a general-elect mayor that would be the voice and the break in the tie, but it sounds more like most of my citizens aren't wanting that, and I'm kind of curious, because I want to go to these workshops to hear why you guys don't want that. I thought, once we got to a certain size, and I thought, you know, 80 to 90,000, maybe even 100, if you can count everybody and find them all, we would be timed to have that kind of, that person that we could bond everyone against. I know there's infighting, but that's not our culture. Rancho Cordova really doesn't, like, argue tooth and nail and scream at each other and try to stab each other in their back, because we grew up here and we're family, we may disagree, but we then come to it, but I thought we wanted that step out, that here's the guy that's going to be our voice for four years, instead of, we're going to rotate it around, because really, at this point, the mayor is whoever wants to grab the badge at the time, it's not a person that takes it. And so I'm hoping a lot of you reach out to me, I'll have hours here, if you guys would like to tell me what you guys are thinking and how you guys came, if you could probably send me emails, because I don't, I want to hear from everybody, it's kind of like when we were doing the Civic Center, I need to have more info before I can make a decision. And right now, I, I know they're pushing at timelines and I apologize, I'll see what I can do, we've already scheduled the time, but I would be willing to have a coffee and talk to all the citizens in the Lincoln Village and some of the other areas where the people don't have the money or the means to get here, to find out what their gut is about five, seven, and a, and a direct elect. I don't think, I think I only heard one person that thinks that that's a good idea, which means that's probably more on the other side, but at this point, I'm just uncomfortable with giving you guys a sec, when really, it sounds like we're kind of all over the place, and a lot of you just got the mailer, which really makes me uncomfortable, and so I really feel like you guys need a chance to really absorb this, think about it, and really get a hold of me and tell me what your gut is in, in the end. You know, if some of you got it today, then, and just showed up, thank you, because I want to hear from you, and the people that are online shoot stuff to me, I want to see you in this building. When looking at it, and I haven't drawn any maps, let me give the, the things, or done anything that would get me in trouble, but I'm curious to what you guys really want to see going forward. You know, this, this is the next, and, you know, it takes a lot of energy to get, being someone that's helped out, it takes a lot of energy to get the whole community together, to put something on the ballot, to redo stuff, so I'd rather have something that a majority of citizens really want to see. So as we take these steps, I'm more in a listening phase at this point, five and seven were great, I thought we wanted a direct-elect mayor, now it sounds like we don't want a general, a direct-elect mayor, so I don't feel comfortable with giving any advice actually moving forward, I need to hear from more of you, and, and I actually, when you come and talk to me, I want to debate you to figure out what, what's going on in your head. You've seen how well Rancho Cordova's grown from here, you see all the projects we're working on from the park districts to the school districts, and how we're trying to grow, and this is, this is literally one of the biggest steps a community can take besides becoming its own citizen, so that's where I'm falling right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Garrett. Siri? Siri?
Sorry, Lupe, I had a question.
I have a question for Garrett.
Sorry, Lupe, public comment was closed. He would love to hear from you.
So thank you, Mayor, for giving me the chance to speak on this, you know, representation matters, as you can see, diversity matters, we've come a long way, the city of Rancho Cordova, to see this diversity on this table. I'll, I'll keep my comments short, I believe in representation, and I believe that we need these districts. I, I am on the fence between five and seven, because five has been working, but seven may give an opportunity for more people to be on the council and keep the diversity that we are seeing today. So on that, I, I like five or seven, I feel nine is too much for a city our size. So again, I'd like to get some more community feedback on which they prefer the five or the seven, so, but those are my two choices. On the directly elected mayor versus the rotating mayor, I've heard you guys strong and clear, and even my opinion is the same, that we need the rotating mayor, because we, I believe in the harmony that I see i- in the city, and I've seen cities that do not have this kind of harmony between their colleagues, and that's because they always have to figure out who they want to side with, and there's a lot of working on the back, you know, behind their backs, and I, and I don't see that in our city, and I want to keep this, not just for us, because I think this council obviously has come to a stage where they work really well together, but we're setting a precedence for future council members to come, and we want to keep that going. And when I see something working, obviously, I'm the newbie on the block, but I've gone to other council meetings and I've gone to other trips with other, where other council members are, and I've seen that what works in our city and what does not, having this rotating mayor absolutely works. So on that one, I am with the rotating mayor. Thank you.
Can I ask you a quick question? With the rotating mayor, would you, it, that means that someone could get elected and would never become mayor?
No, it means what we have right now is.
Because if you go to seven, and you do a rotating mayor, and I think, we could actually have someone get elected that would never get to be mayor.
So I'm elected.
That happens now.
Yeah.
So if, if, Siri, for Siri to become mayor under the current numbers that we have, in theory, she'd be, she'd be vice mayor next year, you'd have to get reelected, then you'd become mayor.
Right.
So.
Even today.
So if you didn't get reelected after your first term, you'd never be mayor, today.
David?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, this is certainly a big decision. It ranks right up there with, I don't know, any we've, any we've probably taken, because it has such impact on the city. People have asked me since our incorporation, why, why become a city? What's the benefit of becoming a city? What's like the, the fundamental thing that makes a city different from what we had before, which was just governance by county? And I, you know, I've thought about that for a lot of years now, and I think the answer is attention to detail, because as a city, we pay attention to the details, you know, people turn things into us, you've got potentially five council members jumping on that problem, you have a staff that's dedicated to worrying about those little things, and in a county jurisdiction, you don't have that, you might have one supervisor watching out for you, they can't possibly monitor, you know, a quarter of a million or half a million residents for all their issues, but at our level, we can and we do, and I think that attention to detail is probably the fundamental benefit of being in a city. And so as I think about how we change this, I think attention to detail ought to remain, like, one of the goals, because we don't want to, we don't want to give that up. And we've accomplished things, you know, we've accomplished crime going down incredibly in this city, jobs going up, housing going up, we have a great record, we have a great fiscal record, we have a great record with regard to what we're doing for people's quality of life, we don't want to risk that. And I gratefully have heard a lot of people talk about our culture as a council, and I think that is, I want to say, a unique thing. I assume there are other city councils that historically have gotten along, but for 20 years, we have not had an infighting council, and I don't know how many jurisdictions can claim that. I think, as Linda would probably agree, we started on that foot because four of us, at least, of the original five, had been community activists, community workers, community leaders.
We all knew each other.
For a while, knew each other in a lot of different settings.
Yeah.
And so that's sort of what led to that culture of getting along, and Siri's exactly right, we have to keep that, have to keep that going. So things that would divide us or radically mess that up could alter our, the positive course we're on, so that requires me to, to think hard about that. There are downsides to having districts, and so historically, I have not liked really the idea of districts, because I've seen the worst of them elsewhere. You know, city of Sacramento, I guess they're the punching bag of the night, but when they had districts and something came along, say like, here's some money for transportation, the wealthiest council district would get the same amount of money as the poorest council district, and they would divide it up, just like, we have nine council districts, cut it up, you know, equally spread, even if need was extreme on one side and nonexistent on the other. That's just dumb, right? And we can't allow ourselves, going into districts, to behave in that sort of a dumb way, we still have to watch out for the entire city, mind those details, and be sure that we're actually meeting the need, not just doing something political by dividing by five. That would be, that would be a huge loss. And so I'm, I'm sitting here in this situation, thinking about, how do you, how do you do that going forward? I mean, we can do it with culture, just, you know, new council members come in, we bring them into the culture, we have the support of a community that, you know, helps us with the culture. But another figure who might do that is a direct-elect mayor, because here's the other reality, if we go to, which we're going to districts, when we go to districts, you will no longer get to vote for five people to represent you at the city, you'll get to vote for one. So you have five votes now, you're going to one. That's a big, big difference. If we had a direct-elect mayor, then you would have the person who represented your district and a mayor, you'd get two votes with regard to your city leadership, not one. So in a way, that's double the input, that's twice the number of people you can call for help with the problem, that's twice the number of people paying attention to a detail in your neighborhood or your district. So this is, this is just what I'm thinking about. There's this balkanization thing that happens in some jurisdictions when they go to districts, and that's something I really want to avoid, but I think a direct-elect mayor can kind of hold that together. So that's what I'm, that's what I'm balancing in my head. And as we mentioned at a, at a previous discussion, direct-elect mayors, if you've got someone, no extra powers, this is not a strong mayor, strong mayor's not on the table, if you have someone who's elected citywide, they become a bit of a figurehead. A lightning rod, yes, for local controversy, absolutely, that would be part of the job, but also a bit of a figurehead for the region, so that your jurisdiction has a more constant and continuous sort of influence in the region, instead of people from other jurisdictions not knowing who is in charge here, not knowing who to call, or, or what you're interested in, or what the vision of that community is, how can we work together with Rancho Cordova, not sure, I don't even know who's in charge, just, you know, nine people on the city council, they rotate the job. Having a direct-elect mayor gives you that, like, touchstone person, even though they don't have any additional powers. So, I don't know, I think, I really don't want to make a decision tonight on this, I am really worried about the timeline of how people were noticed, I mean, people were rushing in here not having any idea what this debate was even about. It seems to me like we really need a little more time, particularly one of the community meetings that's just focused on this, so I don't know if we can halt this decision for a week, we have another meeting next Monday. If that was possible, if we just delayed the decision, perhaps we could just agree to reduce options, I don't know if anyone's advocating for nine or eight, I mean, I think those two are probably off the table, based on what I've heard from my colleagues, maybe we reduce it to four, so people who want to play with maps have, have fewer options to worry about, and we try to make this decision in a week. Thank you.
I've never made any secret of the fact that I don't think we should be having to do this, and I realize that most of the people who spoke tonight completely disagree with me, but for all the reasons that, that David has described, we are an incredibly diverse city, and we all live together, and we all live on the same streets together, and we do not, this is not, this is not Boston, or Chicago, or Philadelphia, or. or New York City where you have an Italian community and a Polish community and an Irish community. So I'm not a fan of this. I have long thought that the city of Rancho Cordova needs a directly elected mayor. It is important because we are a very important organization in this region. We are actually a very important organization. No small thanks to David in the United States. And because of our incredible business base here, we actually have a worldwide presence with the corporations that are located here and use Rancho Cordova as their mailing address. So I do support a directly elected mayor. But I am really concerned at how we get through this process preserving and not dividing not only the diversity that we have within our city, but the diversity that we have on this council. And from my perspective, that's going to be difficult enough to do without trying to tackle whether or not we elect somebody to be the mayor. David has a really good point. At this point in time, we are responsible for everybody. And regardless of what was mentioned, you know, I feel as responsible and as connected to Sun River and Mills Ranch and Cordova Gardens, where my kids went to elementary school, as I do to the people who live on my block. And as a matter of fact, I probably know the people who live in those areas better than I know the people on my block. But we don't get, we're not being given the opportunity to continue that kind of global representation for all of our residents. And he's right, you all are going to get to vote for one person. Or if there were a directly elected mayor, you'd get to vote for two people. And neither one of those, from my perspective, is a good, is a good choice. But Rancho Cordova is very oddly shaped. There's no question about it. And it strikes me that we might, going through this process, be able to find better representation, better representation for different parts of Rancho Cordova if we go to seven council members. And that would mean in 2024, we would have another two people join us on this, on this body. And I've heard a couple of guys recommend five or seven. I also agree with Garrett and with Donald and with Siri, with David and with Siri that there probably isn't enough public notification about this yet. We'll find out more about it when we get to Thursday night's meeting to see who by that time has, has received a postcard and wants to show up. We're a good crowd tonight. One would hope we have at least twice as many people on Thursday night. The problem we're going to have on the 14th, guys, Garrett is not going to be at the meeting, as he said, and Siri's going to be late. So we really don't want to push this off. No, I don't think people should have to draw six different meetings and six different maps, you know, and sort of throw them up on the fan and see what sticks on the wall.
Is Garrett traveling in such a way that he could remotely-
Garrett, question.
Yeah.
Are you traveling in a way that you could dial in, zoom in? Other people-
I am coming down the mountain, so I could, let me find a way to find some spot. I'm going to go talk to the people at Colfax or some of those places to see if I can use one of their city council chambers to make it happen.
All we need is-
Take your, take your lap.
All we need is an address and a phone.
Yeah.
Yeah, that. Can I get down the hill, Todd? You think I can get down the hill?
It's only two and a half hours between here and Reno.
I'll make it. I'll make it. Not a problem.
We're starting at 6:30.
We're starting at 6:30? Yeah, I'm going to be late. I'm going to be, I'm going to be running in here. Just talk a long time. You know what? Maybe you can go over the history of Rancho. And you could talk about Cordova Village.
Why don't we take this offline with the city attorney and talk about where you're going to be? And if there's a public place somewhere where you're going to be, that you could dial in.
Because I could do a library out there, maybe, or-
We have, we have great community relations with a few cities up the hill.
Yeah.
And I know a member of the public brought this up recently. If, if we publicly notice ahead of time that somebody's going to be remote, that has nothing to do with the emergency 20% rule and all the other things that somebody had brought up before, that you're, you're fully counting towards the quorum and you can take a meeting remote. That's been legal, that's been legal forever. And there were some unique rules during COVID.
Exactly.
Yes. Okay, all right. So we've got everybody's opinions on the table. And we're going to defer the question of how many and what characteristics the council takes to the meeting on the 14th, which is a special meeting, guys.
So, so-
I guess for the benefit of the public, would it be useful if we restated, for example, I mean, Mr. Terry was the only one who mentioned nine, but then appeared to take that off the table or possibly take that off the table.
Prefer seven.
And the rest of you, and said he preferred seven. So the rest of you talked about five or seven.
Five or seven.
Or potentially six if there's, so-
An elected mayor.
With an elected mayor. So we're somewhere between, the council, the range for the council was somewhere between four and seven. And the issue of a directly elected mayor remains on the table.
But if we could strike eight to nine, that would be helpful, I suppose.
Yeah.
That's right. That's what I'm suggesting.
Yeah, let me-
Or eight.
Let me-
Well, having heard from everybody, does anybody want to clarify their comments anymore?
I would not vote for four and one.
That might be a question you could pose to your colleagues.
I guess that's what I'm saying. I think, I don't know exactly what I heard. I said seven, you said seven. Is there another council member that's willing to agree with us at seven? Because if we are without a directly elected mayor, then these folks will have some clarity as to what to work on in the next week or two.
Well, but it's not a vote tonight. It's just direction.
Right.
And, but my, my point is, I would not, if we were going to stay with five council members, I would not vote for a directly elected mayor where there would be only four council members and the mayor.
If it was six, would you, would you want?
The only way, yeah, the only way I could see voting for that, it would be six.
Six with a directly elected mayor.
With a directly elected mayor.
Is your preference a direct, seven and a directly elected, or six and a directly elected mayor, or seven and not?
I don't know that.
Six and the mayor might be the happy medium.
Is there anyone who wasn't either six and a directly elected mayor or seven?
I think most of the room was five, so we better leave that on the table.
So I think, you know, partly this is, this is an effort to try to clarify for, for the process. And we're perfectly happy going forward and having the mini-maps that will be available on the, on the options. But there would probably be a benefit because I think the draft maps are due from the community the day after our, our meeting on the 14th. So if we do want to eliminate some of the options, that might be a preference for just eliminating some of the different maps that will be submitted. So I think there is some value into eliminating those. And it would probably appreciate a kind of a more formal motion or vote on that, too, to eliminate some of those options so that we can provide some of that clarity.
For example, would, would a motion of between five and seven and the, and the issue of directly elected mayor or not directly mayor is not yet decided?
Yeah, obviously, it's five, six, or seven.
Yeah, I think we can make a motion on eliminating four, eight, and nine and keep it at five, six, and seven.
Five, six, or seven.
So Siri made a motion, somebody seconded it.
Second.
Thank you. Stacy, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Terry?
Aye, I think I followed that. Four, six, or seven.
No, five, six, or seven.
Three and a quarter.
So let's not confuse the public. Five districts, five, six, or seven. That's what I just heard. Councilmember Terry? I know, thank you. Councilmember Gatewood?
Nah.
Councilmember Pulapati?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sander?
Aye.
Mayor Budge?
Yes.
And Adam, just to clarify, the direct elected mayor is not a strong mayor. It is a council member-like person, except they're elected citywide the way we are now.
Perfectly, perfectly said. And the other thing I would just remind the community of is, by law, the council members, you all are strongly encouraged and welcome to draw maps. But the council members can't start drawing their maps until after you provide input. And they get to start talking about and actually drawing the maps at the third hearing. So if you ask them, when you meet with me, will you draw what you think, council member blank? You know, give me your thoughts. We have very strongly discouraged them repeatedly from doing that because it would, because it wouldn't be allowed at this point. So we want your maps, but they need to wait to give you theirs.
Councilmember Gatewood, would you clarify with a yes or a no?
No.
Thank you.
It was a no. I thought he said no. Jeez. Okey-dokey. So thank you. We're four one. All right. Thank you all for sitting through this. More to come. Come back Thursday night. All right, so Garrett, we have the rest of the agenda to discuss.
We have to go back to the beginning of the agenda.
All right. So returning to the point where we diverted and took up this item, we have public comment. Do we have anybody signed up for general public comment?
Yes, we do. For things that are not on the agenda. So this is technically item number six on the agenda. So once again, if you are joining us now for regular general public comment and you would like to submit public comment via Zoom, you can do that by using the raise hand feature at the bottom of the screen. Or if you're joining us by telephone, you can use asterisk number nine.
Okay, so we're going to ask everybody to take their comments out into the lobby. There are chairs out there. Okay, so this is public comment time. Citizens wishing to address the council on items that are not on the agenda are perfectly welcome to do so now. Remember that we cannot discuss an item that you bring up and could refer you to staff or put it on a future agenda item. And we will ask you to take three minutes and tell us what's on your mind. And translator ladies in the back, thank you all very much for coming.
First speaker will be Diane Rogers. Following Diane Rogers will be James Garcia. Following James Garcia will be Helen Wayland Bishaw, Brenda Guston, and then Bob Collins.
Diane.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. I'm here on behalf, not as my role with the chamber, but as my role with the Rancho Cordova Area Chamber Foundation and our leadership program. I'm just here tonight to remind everyone that applications are available and open for, believe it or not, class 17. We've graduated over three, I know, over 300 students, alumni. The next class of approximately, we're hoping for 24, will be selected to represent. And there are so many wonderful community folks we heard from tonight. And I thought it was the perfect opportunity to encourage folks to apply for leadership. I'll leave my cards at the back of the room if anybody wants to reach out to us and get that application. The class begins in September with a kickoff reception here at City Hall, followed by a two-day retreat in October. In November, the classes begin. And many of you on this dais have either been through the classes or taught them, so thank you for your support there. There is a class project, I'm kind of just rushing through all of this. But for example, class projects have included artistic bike racks around the city, photographic history of Rancho Cordova, summer film series, refurbishing the dog park at Hagan. The participation fee, which covers everything, including the retreat, food, t-shirt, everything like that, is $1,079. And that's pretty much it. I just wanted to take the opportunity with all these wonderful, well, viewer folks, to encourage folks to apply for the program. It's a great program. I just returned from the Association of Leadership Programs National Convention in Knoxville, Tennessee, and learned a lot and got a lot of new information. So I thought this was a great opportunity to remind folks about that opportunity.
There's an Association of Leadership Programs, is that what you just said?
Yes, there is. There's like-
Isn't that funny?
450 of them around the country.
Never heard of that.
Of which about half are chamber-based, some university, and then some standalone independently. So, yeah, it was interesting.
ALP?
There's an association for everything.
Yes, there is. Association of Leadership Programs. All right, thank you all very much.
So James was next?
Yes.
Welcome, James.
Welcome again. I'm James Garcia, a member of Stone Creek neighborhood. And I'm here to kind of come back to some things that we've asked for in the past about the Swenson Hawk proof, that it actually has been mitigated as opposed to being referred to another website. Don't find that appropriate. We should have actually been given proof. There's been enough questions on the Swenson Hawk for the mitigation for the Stone Creek area, and it has not taken place. Also wanted to come back to fire hydrant work that was done on Zimphandel Drive a while back. Referred to that. It was fire hydrant work, but it's not fire hydrant work. It is actual water service. There are a number of water mains being installed or have been installed on Zimphandel Drive at the Stone Creek Industrial Proposed Project site. So I don't, don't believe that it was sewer at all. Also, there's been power line access on Baroque where, at this point in time, there's been vehicles of the people trying to install the work that went onto Dubina Court and parked all their nice heavy equipment and extra trucks and walked across instead of actually servicing properly. They went along Baroque Drive as well and ripped it all up. And that's been going on for a number of days. Don't know why we'd actually have electrical work being done on this unless they're moving ahead of schedule to bring power to a site that still hasn't gone through a full planning.
I just wanted to, I'm sorry to interrupt, but that Dubina Court.
Yes.
I saw photographs of that.
Yes.
There's no work being done on Dubina Court.
Not on Dubina, but it's on the, on Baroque.
So they're walking literally across the-
The court.
Park area at the end.
With all their vehicles.
That makes absolutely no sense. Sorry to interrupt.
Along with parking across onto North Mather, leaving their heavy vehicles over there where it's no commercial parking. So all this is being taking place when it's not supposed to be. We don't know how to stop this other than looking at the project plan sites for all of these. And they're still in the grading approval process. If you look at the conditions of approval, Dubina Court should have been done prior to any improvements, plans done. So we are missing the boat here. I don't know if it's planning or building permit, whatever it is, it needs to stop. We have pending litigation as well. So kind of tired of having to point out all the unnecessary things going on. Thank you.
Brenda's next, or Helen? Welcome, Helen.
Hello. Kind of following up on something James has said. For months, I've been mentioning the fact that these meetings are on Zoom. And the good thing about it being on Zoom, you can't contradict what has been said prior by it not existing. And the reason I bring this up is, last meeting, I mentioned the Swenson Hawks. The Swenson Hawks was part of the development that was agreed to that the time limits expired in 2018. To date, there has been nothing done. Linda referred me to another area that covers the Swenson Hawk stuff when it doesn't, because the Swenson Hawks have a 10-foot, a 10-mile radius. The area that was mentioned to me is 15-mile radius, which is outside the area of the Swenson Hawk. My concern is, we're a city. We're not in a bubble. It does, what we do does not just affect the city of Rancho Cordova. There are many things that are going on that when the city decides on something, they're not looking at what is happening on the outside. The people who, the communities that are adjacent to Rancho Cordova can be affected. But in regards to the- But in regards to the Swenson Hawk, the fact that the agreement expired with Elliott Homes in 2018 and nothing was done to, for the protection of the land that was allegedly promised for the Hawks means it looks like it's a tongue-in-cheek or wink in a handshake. Something that was never intended to be fulfilled by the builder. I am concerned because, Linda, you've mentioned how great Elliott Homes was, a community-based company. And James Garcia brought up that they're housed out of Arizona. The reason why I'm, probably feels like I'm attacking Elliott Homes is the city bought land from Elliott Homes because they were upset. If, you can tell me if I'm wrong or right. Their agreement expired in 2018. So did the city have the right to purchase that land to settle concerns of a builder? Or somebody that feels they were done wrong? They met, they didn't meet the time requirements. So I don't think the city should have bent over and paid for the land. I'm just a little disappointed because this is all public record. It's been recorded. And if somebody says I'm wrong on anything I've said, go look at the prior meetings when I brought things up or when the different council people have mentioned things. I just think we need to look at, at how the city affects the community and the community around Rancho Cordova. We're not an isolated island. And things that the city does, does affect the surrounding communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Helen. Now Brenda?
Yes. Following Brenda will be Bob Collins, Conrad Mayer, and Lupe Hernandez.
Welcome, Brenda.
Thank you. So there was possibly an error by the city and its legal counsel regarding the legitimacy of the development agreement with the Stone Creek Logistics Center. Rather than support their constituents, constituents, constituents by having an impartial judge decide through the declaratory relief process, the city council left the public with no choice but to pay for this process themselves. The public is in a similar position relative to the act of SB 330 submission. We have been advised to look to legal precedent to understand what we are actually reading as it would be interpreted in court. To me, this is why taxpayers employ the city staff. Further, citizens are advised to contact our state assembly and state senate representatives because they now have a say over the fate of this project. We've done this, and both Senator Nilo and Assemblyman Hoover state they have no authority in this matter and send us back to you. I and others have repeatedly cited municipal codes that have been broken by the owners, both past and present of this property. Through SB 330, it has been stated that this developer has brought this in-run around the city using a state process designed to force reluctant cities from allowing affordable housing to be built. This is not the intent of SB 330. However, attorneys such as TruMark's Patricia Curtin teach developers how to utilize SB 330 to do just this. Building in a floodway places neighboring residents in peril and impossible future financial ruin. Repeatedly, the city council and staff have been asked questions to enforce the municipal codes broken. One cease and desist was issued to TruMark when six violations were witnessed and one fine for one tree when 147 protected trees were violated. The city has yet to advise that the proposal does not meet zoning conditions for residential mixed use and that building in a floodway was never a consideration. One reason, rezoning from Ag to RMU was passed in the first place. Questions like these remain unanswered when evidence has been provided to staff with investigation promised. How can council members allow this to continue? These issues do not present legal conflicts of interest under state law. They are conflicts staff and council members are responsible to research and respond. When will the city uphold the general plan and municipal codes? Will the city attorney and staff listen to their constituents, enforce municipal codes, and research legal precedent on behalf of the residents?
Please wrap up your comments.
It is time for city staff and officials to pay attention to the changing climate, historical flooding, and discouraged building in a floodplain as written in the general plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda. Bob Collins? Welcome, Bob.
I'm glad I got this. I'm last?
No, no, sorry.
Oh, okay. Hello. I really enjoyed today's meeting. It just shows what kind of stress you guys go through to get things done. I'm Bob Collins. Just to give you a little my background, I've lived in this area for, for 40 years. So I've been around Rancho Cordova and I, and I really like it. And I'm really concerned about flood protection, our floodways, because we have such a long stretch along our northern border, on the American River, below Nembastam, you know. And because of climate change and some other things.
Excuse me, Bob. I'm going to recuse myself. I'm going to recuse myself because I live adjacent to that item that's on our agenda tonight, and I don't want the appearance of a conflict of interest.
Oh, well, okay.
I can't talk flood.
Okay. It's, it, it seems like we should try to keep the floodplain the way it is and not make any changes to it. And I base that on over 43 years working for the Army Corps of Engineers as their head, as the hydrologist. I am the, I was the subject matter expert in hydrology for the Sacramento District. I've done studies in, in parts of seven western states and a lot in California and some specifically on the American River Basin. And I've noticed changes on the American River Basin and weather changes and climate changes since the late 1950s to, to date. So it was a gradual change, but I noticed it in the frequency of floods and droughts. And right now, with the damage on the American River Basin because of fire burns and, and the rainfall runoff response into Folsom Dam, we have to be careful on where we build along the American River. And sometimes it's safer to use the natural floodplains than encroach on the floodplain by filling in area, you know, 10 feet, 20 feet, or whatever, to reduce the surrounding floodplain from the river. It's naturally meanders. And if you change that, you increase, you can't increase velocities. And backwater, which raises, because of the slope of the river, will raise water because the water slows down, downriver, and it's coming in fast. So it actually raises the actual level, level of the river itself and can flood areas that it wouldn't have flooded before. So I would, I would say, let's, FEMA has different studies that like to preserve as much of the floodplain as possible, and we can do it, and we can have.
Wrap up your comments.
Oh, okay. We could, we could have a walk on the wild side with nature species and all that stuff.
Thank you, Bob.
And thank you for letting me mumble one.
It's okay.
Okay.
Conrad. Welcome, Conrad.
Good evening, good evening, council and Mayor Budge. We had a 20-year celebration this Fourth of July, and you wouldn't know that by what's taking place this evening. The excitement of this room has just been overwhelming. But I want to tell you, Linda, I sat with you Fourth of July, and I couldn't tell you. I've lived here for 56 years. I'll be 63 in November. And I call this home. That night, Fourth of July, I had friends from all over the Sacramento region coming up in the beer sta, beer station, excuse me, and literally crucifying me for telling, for not telling them what a wonderful event this was that I've been involved in or we've been involved in for quite some time. I am proud of the work that you guys do. And I'm not just saying that just to, you know, because somebody's behind. Truthfully, you guys have a very tough job. I remember Dave Roberts meeting with the Cordova Villa neighborhood and telling us the practice of businesses that purchase RD whatever, residential four or five, and what they're entitled to do. They can build a cardboard box on it if they wanted. But the city went out and got the right person to build the right project. And it was an Alex Spanos project, and I was told that this guy builds the premier stuff. And we decided to follow that process instead of having a social wealth, or a welfare office built across the street. We've hollered or, you know, we've talked about the sky is falling on many a projects. The water treatment plant on Cordova, on Coloma Road near Cordova Lane. And I remember people running around screaming like they're, you know, chicken with their heads cut off. You don't even know what that building is over there. I ask people all the time, and they're like, that's part of the church. No, it's not. Inside of it is a water treatment. But years ago, they wanted to rally to cut all your heads off for even thinking about that project. And there's been others like that. So I say that because I've given my trust to you, and I won't go jumping on bandwagons to come out and cut your heads off for projects that we don't fully know of. And you guys have been doing your due diligence, letting the city almost, oh man, I'm looking at the clock, to let us all be involved in these projects so we can see what goes on. Before I get off to stands, I will say that one of the best chief of police, Ruben Meeks, just passed away this afternoon. And he was one that has set the culture that we live in now. So God bless Ruben Meeks, and thank you for hiring him because he was a candidate that no one knew about. And we brought him on, and he did a damn good job, so.
Thank you for letting us know, Conrad.
Thank you, Conrad. We will adjourn in Ruben's memory tonight. Thank you for letting us know. Lupe? Welcome, Lupe.
Sorry to have to ask to insert public comment, but it's, it's important to, I was out in the lobby having some nutrition because being diabetic is not easy. And there's several things that I have to deal with. Medical emergencies pop up from time to time. And so I had overheard on, on the speaker outside in the lobby, something about an extension that you had a timeline or something that you were guided by. You're, you're on a timeline to make a decision. What I'm asking for is for you to request an extension of time for the districting issue. A request is being made. It is summer, but there's also advantages for asking for that additional time. And it hasn't been requested, and I ask you to please extend, ask, request for an extension of that time, not only for yourselves, but for the community and the residents to review and also to input on the districting issues. Number one, because the postcard only came in the mail today. You have to have genuine outreach, genuine outreach to the community. A dog and pony show that goes out to the auditoriums and the schools, wherever you can find, whether it's a school or a church or whatever. And I ask this because that's what we did back in the 90s. And this was without cell phones, emails, and all the, maybe we had emails, but we didn't have cell phones and all the other social media that, that were afforded nowadays. So take advantage of that request. If you're ahead of the game, extend it. Ask for an extension. I'm sure you'll get it. Be sure to at least offer some water to your speakers in the community. If you say we're going to have light snacks, you can be sure it, people will be there. Thank you.
Thank you, Lupe. Anybody else?
That's all the public comment cards that I have received. I'm looking at Zoom, and I do not see any hands raised for general public comment. I would like to mention that the city did receive a few public comments via email. Those have been distributed to the city council. They've been posted on the city's website, and they are also printed in, in the back of the council chambers for those who are present. Those public comments via email came from the following individuals. Valerie Knipstchild, Brenda Augustin, Randy Getz, Tony Curtis, Beverly Thomas, Janice Kelly, Robin Jeffries, Eric Ross, and Iva Lou Woodring.
Thank you, Stacy. Then we'll move into council reports. Donald?
Considering the late hour, I'll go ahead and forego. I didn't have much to report anyways with the, with the July timeframe. There weren't a lot of meetings anyways.
Garrett?
Sacramento Metro Fire, met with them. They actually had some interesting statistics. They're going to come back to us, talk to us more about the fireworks. I actually found it interesting that as much as we want to take down the fireworks show or help out with the illegal fireworks, that mostly comes at the state level. If they're able to do a couple stings on big loads of fireworks coming through, that helps out the community in Rancho for having illegal fireworks going off. Great. Thank you for the national night out. It was amazing to sit with all the people. Whoever has the video of me singing, please don't share that. That's just between me and you as a community. There's really no reason to ever have that show up anywhere. Yeah, it's bad. And yeah, we're gonna, we gotta work on a song. And then Sacramento Public Library, we are very healthy. And the more we promote having a new library in Rancho, we could have our own, our own specific library on the river. Thanks, bye.
Thank you, Garrett. Siri?
I'll make mine quick, too. So along with nearly 40 community leaders, I visited Austin for a study mission tour. We explored the local parks and recreation areas. We checked out everything from esports to a community-first village, which was a nearly 50-acre master plan community that was essentially for those who were unhoused. This provides affordable and permanent housing. It was a really good area where we could see how we could kind of replicate that anywhere in our county. I would like to say National Night Out was a big hit. I visited various neighborhoods. It was really great to see everyone coming together and sharing their stories. Like we saw today, two people that were awarded keys to the city for reaching out and working with the community. I would also like to give a shout out and a huge thanks for the quick turnaround as you, for our RCPD and the Sac County Sheriff's Office for catching the culprit that made racist remarks and nearly drove into people at a park here in Rancho Cordova. What you see that was an isolated incident, and the police reacted really quickly. What you saw today with the community reaching out and the National Night Out, that is what Rancho is all about. The community, the sharing, and the transparency, not these isolated events that come across. So thank you.
Thank you, Siri. David?
Well said, Siri.
Yeah, absolutely.
I, I can't help but think there's some mental health issue that happened in that case. It's just so bizarre and extreme. But in any case, Rancho Cordova is not the place for that kind of behavior, period. And the fact that we identified him, caught him quickly, shows that. And the way we've responded to it shows how healthy we are on those topics. So being very brief here, I just spent eight days, I guess, at the Junior Olympics. We took, the Rancho of a Track Club took 16 athletes up there this year, 16 athletes qualified for the national level competition.
Wow.
The unbelievable thing, though, is five of them were named All-Americans. Now, that means they finished in the top eight of everybody competing in the U.S. And at one point of. And at one point, of the male shot put guys, these are like seniors in high school who just graduated, there are eight of them standing up there. Two of them are Rancho Cordova Track Club kids. Somehow, we captured 25% of the most competitive throwing event. And the other incredible thing is, we had a kid who started 18 months ago, and he's number two in the country now for throwing the hammer. So it's kind of, it's hard to actually get your head around, as a coach, how far some of these kids have come, but it's interesting that the other All-American that was named up there was in the steeplechase. So what we just saw, evidence in an extreme way, was the investments this council made in partnership with the school district in throwing venue and in steeplechase have paid off within a year, not only hosting all the meets that we're not hosting, there's another one coming in about 10 days, Big Meat, but these kids are performing at an unbelievable level. So I'm just, I'm kind of overwhelmed by, by how well they're doing. But I think there's, there's great stuff coming for us as a result of that. July 4th, I think you're going to get a report from Shelley later on, record-setting in every way. At Secog, we're talking about tolling on the I-80 corridor and the overpass between Davis and West Sacramento.
Tolling?
There is, tolling, there is funds to add a lane and then start tolling that particular lane. It wouldn't be 24 hours a day, it would be during certain rush hours, or perhaps a rush to Tahoe hour, or a rush to San Francisco, whatever it is, but tolling is, is coming to the Sacramento region.
So to avoid the toll, you go north to Woodland and down 505 and go to?
So, all the, all the existing lanes that are there would be untold, the way they are now, but there'll be an extra one that you can pay to get into.
To go faster?
Yes. Kind of like the Bay Area, the way they've done it is, looks like it is going to happen here. I've had a bunch of other meetings, Placerville Connector, where we talked about bikes and trains, and National Night Out was awesome. It was so great to be out and see just, those are some big crowds at those events. I was really excited to see the participation, so congratulations to everybody on that. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. So I'm just going to tell you that this has been an incredible two weeks, and I've been to Regional Transit. David and I were at the SBTC JPA today. If you all don't know, that has to do with the rail corridor from 16th Street all the way to Placerville. Attended the graduation of kids at City Hall, went to the concert in the park on Friday night, which was the ACES, which were, who were really good. Went to an Asian Chamber event at a really cool little store over on Olson Drive, kind of next to the tax people, I think, and, and it's actually like a brick and mortar Etsy for entrepreneurs, for people who make things. It's really very interesting. National Night Out, yes.
Happy Niama, I think.
Pardon?
The place, Happy Niama?
Yes, that one. Did you go?
Yes.
Am I right? Brick and mortar Etsy.
Yeah, it's, it's a brick and mortar that allows microbusinesses to showcase their wares, and it's got food and arts and crafts.
Foods, baking, baked goods, arts and crafts, stickers. It started, the lady who, who organized it makes stickers for kids.
It, it's for local artists, if they want to display their wares, go, go to Happy Niama.
Yeah. National Night Out was, we had some really great meetings. The Metro Fire 2x2, as Garrett says, was quite interesting. Roger Nilo gave a great speech at the Cordova Community Council, and I attended the ribbon-cutting for the loveliest business. It's called Aim Higher. It's adult disability services.
Oh, it's part of the local?
Yeah. It's over by the 99, 99-cent liquor store, or something like that, Sterling location. But these are really the nicest people, and instead of just employing them, they teach them how, the skills to go out and get a job, and then help put them together with, with employers, and really very nice. That's my report, in lack of detail, and the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one brief update, I had the pleasure of attending on Friday the APWA awards for Public Works Projects, and want to recognize the Public Works team and the council for supporting three projects that got awards for the region, and the region is actually mostly Northern California, so it's a much bigger region than Sacramento, but those projects were the White Rock Road Project, the RCYC, the Youth Center, and also the American River Outfall Project. So really, congratulations to the Public Works team and all the different project leads and Albert and the Public Works team for putting that together.
That's incredible.
So, three awards, walked home with, so very, much appreciate that.
From complex to so simple, I mean, the, I'm sure, I'm sure the people in the back of the room think that the outfall thing was really very complicated, but it just, you don't think about an outfall winning an award, and it did, so.
And, and I will say, I do, I have seen the video from National Night Out of Council Member Gatewood singing with our Public Works Director, Albert Schicker, and it was, I think, deleted very quickly, so I'm not sure if it exists. If we can find it again, we'll find it.
No, it exists, there are residents there, too. It is.
You carried me the whole time. I appreciate you, Albert. That, like, you know, like, it was an ebony and ivory song, and we killed it. Killed it. That high note? I didn't know you.
That's one way of saying it.
Yeah, that, that, yeah, that, that may not be the right analogy.
You could say, we can do this. Put the music on and give you a mic.
Okey-dokey, moving right along to the consent calendar, ladies and gentlemen. The consent calendar consists of items that are deemed routine and can be approved with one motion if nobody wants to pull any item between 9.1 and 9.10. Stacy, do we have any public comment on any of these items?
Yes, we do. We have public comment on item 9.2, and I'm looking at Zoom, and I do not see any additional hands that are raised.
I'll move the balance of the calendars to 9.1 to?
No, I want to pull 9.3.
Okay.
Okay, so everything else.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to, to move items 9.1, 9.4 through 9.10.
Second.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Terry?
Aye.
Councilmember Pulapati?
Yes.
Councilmember Gatewood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sander?
Aye.
Mayor Budge?
Yes. So, 9.2, do you want to, is there public comment in the room, or?
Yes.
Okay.
In the room. 9.2, the subject is a resolution of the city council of the city of Rancho Cordova of intention to annex the Stone Creek Industrial Project to the city of Rancho Cordova Community Facilities District, number 2014-2, street lighting and landscaping maintenance, and designated time and place to hear protests in connection with the annexation.
Thank you. Elizabeth, would you describe the purpose of the CFD 14-2?
Sure. Elizabeth Barkman, Community Development Director. So this is one of our sort of routine annexations. This is a financial mechanism to where the Stone Creek Industrial Project would be paying its fair share of maintenance for impacts to street, street lighting and landscaping. It's mainly the streets.
Okay, thank you.
What's a little bit different about this one, and you're going to see it, because we're, we're approving a boundary map, we're declaring our intent to tax, we're setting a protest hearing for September 18th, and then what's complicated about this one is, it was in, we already annexed this two years ago into a different CFD, but since then, we've revised our rate and method of apportionment to include an increased tax for parcels that have heavy truck traffic. So since you can't impose it on the one that's already in, we're annexing it into this new one with a higher rate. So when we come back on the 18th, we're going to go through a little bit of a complex process, but other than that, it's a routine annexation for a financial mechanism.
Okay, thank you. And we have public comment?
Yes, James Garcia?
James?
Hello, I'm James Garcia.
Welcome, James.
Hello. Yep. I am here because I wanted to know a little more about the details of the CFD from two years ago, since it was being changed. Also, kind of wanted to know more about the, since it is going into the whole landscape maintenance, and this is a commercial property, are we annexing just the portion on the outside of the property line, where there's already existing greenbelt on Baroque, and then also onto now Zimfandel, and then on the back south side of it would be where the bike trail is? Are we annexing that portion, and that now means they're going to have somebody else take care of the, all the landscaping needs, such as what's happening on the north side of Baroque? So I just really wanted to know who's paying for what and how and when? Is it Dermody, as the, the landowner, going to be responsible for planting it, and then their hands are tied, they don't need it anymore, and now it's all in the CFD to take care of all the landscaping all around it, or also on the property itself, between the buildings, where there's actual plants and everything else there? So, and as was mentioned, there was already annexing into the, the street lighting and maintenance once before, I believe about a month ago, that was already approved for this project, as well as the Lodges Center project. So just kind of curious as to what's going on with all of that, so. And since we have current litigation still on the property, just don't know why we're doing all of this, so there's a lot of questions I have.
So, Elizabeth, the, the boundary, is there parcels?
Yes, it's for, it, it, it's annexing the Dermody properties, right, those parcels into the district. The reason you're thinking you saw it at the last council meeting is because we were working on stormwater, so they annex in to pay their fair share of stormwater maintenance. This one, the item we just pulled, has to do with road maintenance, so, and the stormwater has three, right, you do it in three hearings, so you're going to feel like you're going to be seeing these same things over and over, but it's a process. In terms of who maintains what, so the onsite landscaping will be maintained by Dermody. This landscape maintenance district pays for landscaping on the public parcels, which are like medians, frontage landscaping, the public streets, the public street lighting, not their private street lighting on their property. So I hope that answers your question.
Thank you. Anything else? We ready for a motion?
Yeah.
Donald moved, is there a second? Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Pulapati?
Yes.
Councilmember Terry?
Aye.
Councilmember Gatewood?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sander?
Aye.
Mayor Budge?
Yes, thank you very much. So would you read 9.3, please?
A resolution to submit a letter response to the Sacramento County Grand Jury Report on homelessness.
Thank you. The reason I asked to, to pull this is simply because I've read the draft letter. I also was the recipient of the letter from the grand jury proposing changes to the process, to, to adopting an enormous regional process that might very well be a money sucker and a time waster. And it just, it's important that we do our best job of telling the grand jury all of the wonderful things that we are doing in Rancho Cordova for our homeless population. So that's, that's why I asked that we pull it, simply that we not send this letter, but to give the city manager a chance to do a little revision.
Are you asking to table this item?
No. Well, yeah, it would have to be continued to the?
I, I think if there's just some specific ad to make, let's make that ad, and I could take that direction from you to make the addition. And just to be clear, this is actually a letter that is going, you know, going from me, but on behalf of the council, the actual, the responding party is actually the, the council as a whole. So if there's edits that need to be made or specific things, we can take that direction under this, if you have a particular direction.
Personally, I will say, I, I think the letter's adequate, frankly, and I, I think I'm allowed to disclose it, I'm going to say it anyways. When I was mayor last year, I was the one that interviewed with them for over two hours, giving them input on their, their study. I don't know if I was supposed to say that, but I don't care. We had the letter in front of it, but, so, the, the study, as far as I understand, what they're doing is trying to understand what the service is, th, this wasn't looking into the agreement between the county and the city of Sacramento or anything like that.
No, they proposed?
It was, excuse me, I'm still speaking. So they, they were doing a study of homeless response from governments region-wide, and so to me, I, I think the letter that you put together, Mike, was, was adequate.
But what they ended up doing in the formal letter that they sent was proposing a whole new organization, which was written up in the B, and they asked only for comment from the city and the county and Rancho Cordova and Elk Grove, and I just am suggesting a couple of words in one sentence.
Go put it in.
Go ahead and say what those would be.
Simply to make it, to make it clear that this is our letter that specifically outlines what we are doing, and that we would be concerned about forming another organization that would use up more time and more money that could go to creating solutions. So I would make that motion.
Okay, go ahead.
Add it.
Is that a second?
Second.
Thanks, Garrett. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Gatewood?
Yep.
Councilmember Terry?
Aye.
Councilmember Pulapati?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Budge? Oh, sorry, Vice Mayor Sander?
Aye.
Mayor Budge?
Me, too.
Thought I got promoted for a second.
Okay, moving on to our consent public hearing items, which are also deemed somewhat routine and can be approved with one motion after we have, after we have opened and closed the public hearing. But Stacy, you had a couple of comments on item 10.4, 10.3.
Yes, I also have a public comment for item 10.2.
Okay.
For item 10.3, which is resolutions and an ordinance related to the formation of the city of Rancho Cordova Grant Line 220, Community Facilities District, number 2023-1. I, the city clerk, have received 100% of the ballots, and 100% of the ballot was a yes. They have been, this has been passed by more than two-thirds of the vote for the council action to move forward with the resolution declaring an election result and an ordinance. And in front of you is that ballot. It also has been printed and distributed to those who are here in the council chambers today.
Okay, thank you. So we'll open the public hearing and ask for public comment on item 10.2.
James Garcia?
Welcome, James.
Now, oh, now we can. I'm here again just to kind of question about the stormwater, especially for Lodges Center, since it's been going on when there's, there's current litigation, but I also want to know why the city allowed the use of the land space that's directly across from it, from the newly purchased land off of Bear Hollow and North Mather, for the dropping off and storage of the berms that were used for surrounding the whole entire Lodges Center property with the fencing. That was dropped off at least, you know, later than July 24th, because it was sitting there. We have a picture of it, all the berms dropped off, so don't know why that would be used. Did we get paid for that? I hope we did, because otherwise, that's an illegal storage by Dermody for doing that. And again, stormwater, we talked about lighting, thought we actually already approved all these at least about a month ago, for various other reasons, for this project, but it seems to keep rearing its ugly head back up. So again, did we get paid for it, I hope? Thank you.
Thank you, James.
And just, this is what I mentioned before, it, the stormwater takes three hearings to complete the process, just under the body of law in which it was formed. This is the second one, so it's going to come back one more time, right? This one authorizes us to send out the ballot, so then we will be back in September to report the results of the election for the Lodges Center on, for stormwater, so.
Super, thank you.
So it seems like it's coming back, but that's the process.
Okay. So we'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion on the consent public hearing items?
Do we not have another comment on one, 10.1?
We do not have any additional comment.
Okay. I'll move the calendar.
Second.
Thank you. So call the roll, please.
Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Councilmember Pulapati.
Yes.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Yes, and can you help?
Yes, and come talk to me about the burns after.
Vice Mayor Sander.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Yes, thank you very much. So moving on to public hearing items, Stacy, you want to read all of that that's 11.1?
Yes. Ordinance adding chapter 16.96 Flood Plane Management Ordinance and amending Title III Revenue and Taxation, Chapter 3.60 Purchasing System, Chapter 3.70 Informal Bidding Procedures, Title VI Health and Sanitation, Chapter 6.20 Solid Waste Management, Chapter 6.21 Business and Multifamily Recycling and Organics Recycling, Title X Vehicles and Traffic, Title XII Streets and Sidewalks, Title XV Water and Sewers, Chapter 15.10 Storm Drainage Fee, Chapter 15.12 Stormwater Management and Discharge Control, Title XVI Buildings and Construction, Chapter 16.44 Land Grading and Erosion Control, Chapter 16.84 Development Impact Fees to Finance the Cost of Transportation Facilities.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, because I live in the small portion of Rancho Cordova that could actually flood and be affected by this, I've been advised that I should recuse myself from any discussion.
Okay, thank you, David. All right, Dahlia, welcome. Albert, welcome.
Thank you and good evening, Mayor Budge and members of the council, Albert Stricker with the Public Works Department. And from time to time, the city updates our municipal code and ordinances to clarify and stay in conformance with state and federal requirements. And Dahlia is going to tell us more about the work that we've been doing.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. Thank you for having us today. We're here to provide just an overview of some of the public works code updates that we're bringing to council tonight. So as overview, the goals of the presentation is to inform City Council of the proposed updates to the municipal code. The updates are mainly minor revisions for clarity as well as updates to comply with latest state and federal regulations. The titles that would be presented and discussed in this presentation include titles III, VI, X, XII, XV, and XVI. So for Title III Revenue and Taxation, we are making changes to Chapter 3.6, which is specific for purchasing systems. The purchasing system municipal code basically sets limitations for the purchasing agent for the city, who is currently the city manager. That limit is $100,000 and it's mentioned earlier in the chapter and there's section 3.60.030A. The proposed amendments basically reference back to that earlier section, which will make it easier to update that amount in the future. It would be targeted changed to one section only. For title, for Chapter 3.7, Chapter 3.7 discusses informal bidding procedures within the city and it sets forth bidding procedures for public projects. The updates would basically clarify and revise language in the chapter as well as align the limits with the latest state informal bidding thresholds. For Title X, Title X is specific to vehicle and traffic within the city and it sets forth procedures and standards related to traffic, mobility, pedestrian, and speed limits. The revisions would clarify language within the chapter as well as delete the section that included a list of one-way streets and there's section 10.44. That list of one-way streets is actually not needed. We have made a comparison to other nearby codes and we saw that they do not include the list of one-way street and it becomes outdated. Title XII is specific to streets and sidewalks and standards for streets and sidewalk improvements within the city. The revisions would just make clarifications and update the language as needed in the chapter. Now we move on to Title XV, which is specific to water and sewers. Chapter 15.10 is specific to storm drainage fee within the city. It sets forth provisions for establishment and administration of stormwater fee that basically gets used to operate and maintain the city's drainage system. The revisions update the language to place reference to County of Sacramento as being the lead agency in doing operation of maintenance of the storm drainage facilities within the city. The city have taken on that responsibility since 2014. Now we move on to Chapter 15.12, which sets requirements for stormwater management and discharge control within the city and compliance with the city's municipal stormwater permit. The revisions would update the chapter to align with the latest of the, with the requirements of the latest municipal permit as well, as well as actually, sorry, I'm confusing with another chapter. So just making changes to align it with the latest stormwater permit for the city. Chapter 16 is specific for setting requirements for buildings and construction within the city. We are making edits to Chapter 16.44 for land grading and erosion control, which sets the requirements for compliance with the grading and erosion settlement control requirements for projects in the city. The revisions will update the chapter to clarify language as well as increase the fee for repeat offenders. The proposed fine is $100 per day for first violation and then that fee would increase to $500 per day for second or subsequent violations. Currently, the language only has a fine of $100 per day, no matter what the number of violations is. Chapter 16.84 is specific for transportation impact fees within the city and it sets the standards for the establishment and administration of the transportation impact fee. The revisions align the language in the chapter with the latest next study for the impact fee as well as update the fee categories to match the next study. Now we're going to move on to Title VI, which is Health and Sanitation. We're making updates to Chapter 6.2, specific to solid waste management. Chapter 6.2 sets forth residential and commercial solid waste requirements within the city. The changes will align the language in the chapter to match the requirements of the statewide mandatory organic recycling program, better known as SB 1383. Now we're going to move on to Chapter 6.21 for organics recycling. Chapter 6.21 sets forward a mechanism to require implementation of recycling programs and organics recycling for covered generators within the city. Again, the changes to the chapter will align the language with the requirements of the latest statewide mandatory organic recycling program, SB 1383. So last, not least, we are moving forward with, we're proposing to add Chapter 16.96. This is a new chapter that will be specific to floodplain management ordinance. In general, floodplain management ordinance are a set of regulations and guidelines that are implemented in areas where there is flooding and there is development that's approved to be built within that flooded areas. Usually the requirements set forth mitigation measures and other activities that the development would have to comply with to preserve public safety. The city of Rancho Cordova currently implements the Sacramento County Flood Plane Management Ordinance. We have, we have been implementing those ordinance since incorporation. However, in a recent audit by the Department of Water Resources as well as FEMA, the city was directed to adopt its own ordinance and that will allow us to continue participation in the National Flood Insurance Program. The National Flood Insurance Program allows properties within the floodplain to be able to purchase flood insurance through FEMA as well as allow properties within the floodplain areas to be able to get mortgages and, and allows cities to also continue to get emergency response funding. So the floodplain management ordinance replaces the city's reliance on county code. Currently, if we want to make changes to the code, that means we have to actually submit those changes to the county and wait for them to make the updates. And that means we have to rely on the county's timeline and that's not efficient. However, now we will have our own city ordinance as required by FEMA and DWR. The proposed language actually uses latest model templates that were created by Department of Water Resources and it is compliant with FEMA and with the latest requirements for development in the floodplain. The ordinance does not change the city's processes in regulating floodplains. So for example, a project that is being regulated or conditioned today under the current standards, we'd receive identical conditions and requirements once we make the switch to these new ordinance. The new ordinance shall be approved by the end of August. That's a FEMA regulatory deadline for making the update to the ordinance.
And if we don't comply with that, there's a risk that people that are, that are living in a floodplain and are, and are getting flood insurance now and are part of the flood, the National Flood Protection Program would not be able to continue to receive that, that insurance.
Yes, and we actually...
Oh, you're going to talk about it here?
Yeah, we can talk about it on this next slide. Sorry, it has a lot of verbiage, but basically you are correct. So to jump forward to the last bullet, if we do not comply, there are some measurable implications, mainly that residents would not be able to purchase flood insurance if they have property within the floodplain. Existing flood insurance policies would not be renewed. And if you have federal grants or loans, those would not, that for properties within the floodplain, those would not be supported. We also, as a community, as a city, would not receive disaster assistance funding from FEMA because we would not be in good standing at that point. And then no federal mortgage insurance or guarantees would be allowed for properties in the floodplain.
So what that means is that for any properties in the flood zone, you couldn't get a mortgage?
Yes.
You couldn't buy a home there and finance it with a federally backed mortgage?
Yes.
Sorry, that, that's the banker in me talking. But it, it is, I mean, it is really important and I, you know, whatever other comments about developments and other things that, that might come up about this, this could seriously affect people that are living here now or people that want to move here and their ability to actually get financing.
Yes.
Because you can't get a mortgage without insurance for these and this would lapse it. Yeah, it's really important.
So we also wanted to point out that the floodplain management ordinance, the, the proposed language actually meets general plan policy S.2, .1, .2, which specifically requires the city to participate in the National Flood Insurance Program and update the floodplain management ordinance as necessary to help reduce future flood damage within the city. Finally, we would like to point out that the proposed floodplain management ordinance does not supersede any more restrictive general plan policies as well as it does not repeal or supersede any other more restrictive codes or other requirements. Getting any variances for requirements entered the floodplain management ordinance is very restrictive and would only be approved by going in front of the planning commission. And the planning commission would have to consider recommendations from the city's floodplain administrator. Those variances would only be allowed in cases where it's very extreme. For example, preserving a historic building for ag uses or in cases where it would, you know, raising the floor or complying with the ordinance would majorly impact the use of the property. So I know there was a question that came through a public comment about that, so we wanted to point that out. And then I'm going to turn it back to Albert to cover the proposed action.
Thank you very much, Dahlia. And we, we published this presentation last week. And so tonight we do have a slightly different recommendation than what you're seeing on the slide in front of you. And we recommend that we receive any additional public comment this evening and we would appreciate any council input. And staff is available to answer any questions. After Q and A, we recommend that we continue the item to August 21st to allow us to fully address public comments that we've received in writing earlier today and that we may receive this evening and respond.
And then we would return at a future date for the second reading of the ordinance?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you all for your attention to detail. Colleagues, are there any questions for staff? Then we'll open the public hearing and ask if there's any public comment.
We do have public comment. We'll start with Mark Berry. He is in the council chambers. Following Mark will be James Garcia, Sergio Diaz, and then Helen Wayland-Bashaw. And if you are joining us by Zoom or telephone, this is the time to raise your hand.
Mark, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Budge and Honorable Mayor... Board members, you know, I, at the Flood Plane Management Association lunch, I did get to see the drainage outfall project and it was a, you know, it was a matter of public concern and just a very elegant resolution to a, a public problem. And you deserve an award for that. I thought it was a very cool project, but there's probably, it's kind of my thing. So anyway, I don't want to take up too much time with that. But so really to maintain a minimum level of flood safety, the city is required to adopt a FEMA-compliant flood management ordinance that meets or exceeds the requirements of the National Flood Insurance Program. So now the National Flood Insurance Program has a guidebook published in 2020. Page 79 refers to the Central Valley as, you know, a unique place of flood risk and the role of the Central Valley Flood, Central Valley Flood Protection Board related to permits and encroachments in the designated floodway. Now portions of the city of Rancho are both within the FEMA floodplain and the Central Valley Flood Protection Board Designated Floodways under California Code of Regulation Title 73. The new floodplain ordinance seems to not consider the National Flood Insurance Program Guidebooks references to the Central Valley Flood Control Board's requirements. According to Department of Water Resources, there are basically three forms of flood protection along the Lower American River. One is levees, the other is dams, and the third really is the regulations, such as that of the FEMA Special Flood Hazard Areas and the designated floodways of the Central Valley Flood Protection Board. So really on the south side of the American River, the federal levee protection that starts at Discovery Park kind of ends right about Watt Avenue. And really on the south side of the river, there's really no levee protection from approximately Watt to Lake Natomah that puts Rancho Cordova in an area that really needs the regulations and the protection of the regulations. Now, there are two differences between the, the board regulations and the FEMA regulations. And according to the workshop at the Central Valley Flood Protection Board in, in July 2023, the purpose of the National Flood Insurance Program is insurance recovery, whereas the State Flood Control Board is focused on flood prevention. So, you know, the National Flood Protection Board is actually, or flood insurance program, I should say, is $20.5 billion in debt right now.
Please wrap up your comments.
Okay, so I'd say let's focus on prevention. And to do that, and please give me one more moment, I think there should be a direct reference to the Code of Regulation Title 23, which is the Flood Protection Board Regulation for Waters.
So Mark, you heard Albert say that... that they're going to spend the next period before we come back on the 21st to study the comments. So did he get a copy of your comments?
He did, and I just, just want to conclude and thank, thank you. But we, we make references to the building codes, Title 24. I think we should also make a reference to Title 23.
That would be some of the additions he'll be looking at. Thank you. James, welcome.
I'm back. I'm James Garcia from Stone Creek. I have a couple of comments on this. One with section 16.44 about the land grading. There's been mention by numbers of the community that Trumark has done some illegal grading, and happy to see that we're finally going to get some fines. So hopefully, we can actually start fining Trumark for illegally grading and damaging all of the trees that have been on the property out there at Cassis. Also, the 16.96, we had a person who was a former Army Corps of Engineer earlier speak about the floodplain and that the whole Sacramento, or excuse me, the American River should be protected and used with this for flood management. So it's not just one section. As you change the shape of the river, you really should look at it because it does expand where things can get flooded. And if you want to use the fund Cassis property, they want to propose moving all the land down towards the river, which is going to change that whole flooding over there. But I'm thinking the whole border of our Rancho Cordova along the river there. Because again, if Lake Natomas dam breaks, it's going to flood all of us over there. So again, just making sure that our ordinance is actually, has enough teeth to stop stupid development and protect our people, as Mr. Terry said, about getting the proper flood insurance. I want people to be able to buy flood insurance if they want to move to our city here and enjoy our river and anywhere else around it. So have the proper teeth to do it and not just make it the minimum. Use the most stringent rules that are out there because again, our city can go under quick if that dam breaks and we get another nice winter. So I've been in the city long enough to see the river go up. So, thank you.
Thank you, James.
Sergio Diaz?
Sergio, welcome.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. I know it's very late in the evening. I've written correspondence to all of you. I've also provided the clerk with, it's called the National Flood Insurance Program in California Quick Guide, page 79, for you to review. So the points in the letter are as follows. I understand of Councilmember Terry's reasons for expediting the approval of this ordinance, and I appreciate that, that people very much need flood insurance program, that those, that mortgages depend on it, et cetera. But the ordinance as proposed seeks an exemption from environmental review. I'd like to respond to that. Number one, the ordinance, which is 80, 29 pages and 84 sections, greatly expands the proposed use of the building in the floodplain. Namely, there, there's a pending project before the city to build approximately 200 homes in the floodplain. So this ordinance directly speaks to that, and it very much contemplates the building of those homes in, in the floodplain. For that reason, an environmental review is merited. Secondly, as Mr. Berry pointed out, there is dual jurisdiction here. The Central Valley Flood Protection Board regulates a portion of the floodway in the same way that the FEMA regulates the floodway. In those 29 pages and 84 sections, nowhere is a Central Valley Flood Protection Board mentioned, which means that somebody before the city could say, grant me approval. The city would grant approval and would be violating state law because the Central Valley Flood Protection Board has different regulations for approving a development in the floodway, floodplain. Secondly, there's, there's an urgency here to adopt this, this ordinance. SAFCA, which is the Sacramento Area Flood Control Agency, has submitted information to FEMA based on new elevations. FEMA has not approved that information. So while FEMA is insisting that this be completed in August, FEMA hasn't actually approved those different flooded elevations and has drawn maps to signify where the inundation might occur. Troubling is that the, the proposed regulation or ordinance provides a waiver of liability to city council, to city staff, to agents for any erroneous advice about building in the floodway. It also provides that same blanket of immunity to the flood administrator. So the flood administrator, under these proposed ordinances, could say, I'm waiving any of these reports that are required to prove to the city that it would be safe to.
Please wrap up your comments.
Yes, to build in the floodway. Where does that leave the homeowner who suffers inundation? He's not going to go against the developer because the developer's gone with limited liability corporation, not going to have any recourse against the city. Maybe they'll get some coverage from their insurance, maybe not.
Thank you, Sergio. I know you wrote, I know you wrote a letter. Did you?
I'm sorry.
I know you sent the city council the letter. Did you send it to Albert?
I sent it. I have a copy. I'll give him a copy.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Welcome, Helen.
Hello. I'm Helen Wayland-Bachar. I've been at my house since 1983. In 1986, there were no houses in front of me. The area flooded, the orchard flooded. To allow a build to take place based on what a builder wants, you're changing the floodway to the established gated community of approximately 17 homes that have been in place since 1973. In 1986, the gated community flooded because my husband and I were looking at buying a house there, and I said, I'm not moving there, there's sandbag. It flooded not once, but twice that area did. If anybody's kept up with the news, 9809, Meyer del Rio made the front cover of the Bee, or somewhere in the Bee, you can see it, where a root structure kept their patio in place. That river cannot be controlled. There is a tree in Riverbend Park that all you see are the roots out. It sits probably about 30 feet from the river, but the river you cannot control. And to allow a builder to come in, raise an elevation to take their property out of a floodway is detrimental to the people that exist in that area. There's nothing saying all these things are going to put in place, allegedly put in place, will do any good. That ground has water running under it. When you lime a soil, make it hard, you still can't control what's underneath. Think about what took place in Florida a year ago when the apartment buildings collapsed. Think about what happened over Natomas when the foundations cracked. So city will be accepting liability by approving a plan to modify a floodway to allow a builder to pull soil down. But you, you cannot control the river. The river has cut into Mark's properties, lost like 10 feet. I used to be able to walk from the Cassis property into Riverbend Park. Now I need waiters. So that is how much the property has changed since 1983 when I moved in. You need to accept the more stringent rules that govern it. The Central Valley Flood Protection Board has already denied Trumark. Just because the Folsom Boulevard Plan is in existence did not cover 41 acres of the property. 20, almost 21 acres is, sits about 20 to 30 feet below Folsom Boulevard. You should only be covering about 10 acres of the property on the Folsom Boulevard Plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Helen.
The city clerk's office also received one written public comment via email from Sergio Diaz. It's been distributed to the city council. It's been placed on the city's website, and it's been printed and placed in the back of the council chambers in the public comment binder.
Anybody on Zoom?
There is no public comment on Zoom for this item.
Okay, then we'll close the public hearing. And I think the request was to continue this to the 21st of August?
Stop. So I moved. Second, and can you come, hit me up? I, I have a question about the thing where he says that by passing this, we're going to get rid of, they don't have to do a environmental study? Something in our ordinance says that, so I just, I'm curious. You don't have to do it right now, but let's talk offline. Yeah, I don't think that's accurate. Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Call the roll.
Councilmember Gatewood?
Yep.
Councilmember Terry?
Aye.
Councilmember Pulapati?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sander has recused himself. Mayor Budge?
Yes, thank you very much. Okay, we have no regular calendar items. Wow. Any requests for future agenda items, guys? Anybody?
Yeah. Yeah, I got one. Are you going to ask it? I, I think I'm going to ask it. I'm going to ask for a holiday. No, come on, that was mine. Listen, listen, don't be that way. We want two new holidays. I'll do one, and you can do one. Juneteenth, want to talk about having Juneteenth become a holiday? I would like Caesar Chavez Day to be added to the calendar.
Thank you very much. We'll put that on a future agenda. And with that, we are going to adjourn to closed session. We're going to adjourn in the memory of our former police chief, Ruben Meeks, and we'll ask Stacy to read the titles of the closed session items.
The closed session items, 16.1, Conference with Legal Counsel: Existing Litigation Pursuant to California Government Code Section 54956.9D1. Stone Creek Residents for Smart Growth and Unincorporated Association versus City of Rancho Cordova. Respondent Dermody Properties and DOZES 1-10. Real Properties and Interest, Sacramento Superior Court, Case Number 23 WM 000026. Item 16.2, Conference with Legal Counsel: Existing Litigation Pursuant to California Government Code Section 54956.9D1. Stone Creek Residents for Smart Growth and Unincorporated Association versus City of Rancho Cordova. And DOZES 1 through 10. Respondent Dermody Properties and DOZES 11 through 20. Real Prop, Real Parties and Interest, Sacramento Superior Court, Case Number 23 WM 000052.
Thank you, Stacy.
Recording in progress.
Adam, will we, will be, will we be out for a report? Okay, at some point. Thank you very much. We're adjourned to closed session.
Recording stopped.